All right, so it is 6:33. Now I'll open the meeting and I will move to enter into executive session for the purpose, purposes of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for collective bargaining sessions related to the role of Director of Building Operations as it may impact clerical staff, public works, laborers, and custodians, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations for collective bargaining sessions related to the role of an interim town clerk as it may impact clerical staff, professionals, and non-union personnel contracts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jeff and Chris. All in favor. Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. See everybody's patience. Sorry that our other meeting went so long. But we'll start by reading the script for the meeting. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. I'm going to go with Megan.
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
I also know, I see Justin is on. Becky?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. I see Chief Noble is on and various other staff as well. Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all public, all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Also, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for an executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I know otherwise. Again, the way you get to Board Docs, you go to the town website, go to Board of Selectmen, go to agenda, go to the meetings, go to packet, and the agenda is there. The information is there. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold your name until, and please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If the members wish to engage in collectively with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair will afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So moving to the next item on the agenda, it is public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Okay, I see. It's kind of hard, but I think I see. Go ahead. Donna, I believe.
Yeah. Hi, Donna Dodson, 123 Summer Street. Good evening. So when I make a public comment, I was at the town meeting on Saturday in the parking lot. And I noticed that one item got tabled and I commented on that item. And I just wanted to share a little bit of research. This is concerning the bicycles listed under our nuisance laws. I noticed that it had jumped from seven points up to 10 points. And I looked at Stowe, Acton, Sudbury. None of them have anything like this on their bylaws. The closest one to us is Hudson, which it looked like where we might have taken some of our language. But I also want to just note that their fines are only $25 for the offenses. They, they have very few. They just have like one paragraph. I'm sure something happened to precipitate why we have this kind of extensive. But I guess to me, not knowing the details, um, we just put in a bike path, you know, and it's a big promotional tool for the town. It just seems odd that we have so like higher restriction, more restrictions than the surrounding towns. And, and I do appreciate the work that went in. I've been on committees. I don't mean to be part of tearing something down that someone spent a lot of time working on. And I'm happy to be part of a solution, but that was my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. I appreciate it. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay. Let me just double check. Anyone else have any? No? Okay. All right, then we will move on to the first. So move on to the first item on the agenda. Actually, Greg, just going to ask you, should we do public hearings first and table everything else? So we can get, because the public hearings were late.
I mean, it's up to you. So as long as you don't start the public hearing before the designated time, which I think we're well after anyways. So it's up to you. I mean, it's a tough call.
Right. All right. So I think what I'm going to do, I think we'll, we'll do items four and five, which are our minutes and correspondences, and then we will move to the public hearings. We'll just skip six. Actually, I think we'll just get it all done. Sorry. My apologies. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have any comments regarding?
In the motion, Armand, you need to identify the specific minutes that we are approving and the, you need, you can't just say to approve the minutes. You need to say the specific date that you're approving. I believe you want to approve the minutes of September 15, 2020.
Yeah, 2020, yeah.
Thank you, David.
And authorizing the use of general signatures, of digital signatures.
Yep.
Does anybody have any comments on the minutes? No? All right. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five is correspondences. I will entertain a motion.
I will move to accept the correspondence. I just want to get to it. Hold on. Almost to accept the correspondence as presented in items A through L.
Okay.
Second.
I do have, I do have a quick question for Greg. I read with some concern this, the letter that came from the dog owner about the, the issue with the dog. And I'm just wondering, has that, has that been at all run by the, the animal control officer to make sure that she doesn't have any concerns with the, you know, that particular dog or with the issues that's ongoing?
No, we, we had mostly through Becky immediately told, told Jen Condon, the Seattle Animal Control Officer. I don't, I don't recall. Did we hear back from Jen? Not, we don't really get into the details about it, but did we hear back from Jen? Okay, we'll follow up, make sure, make sure it's all good.
That's it.
I have a question about the, the Keno license.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a, do you know if there's a differentiation between a Keno license in a sit-down establishment versus a Keno, Keno in a place like, you know, a 7-Eleven where there is no seating? I mean, you know, typically Keno people sit there and watch the numbers come up. That, how do you prevent that at 7-Eleven? Is that something we can control or is that something that they control?
I don't know. So your question is, it does the Keno license get into the, whether, what was your question? Whether you can sit or stand? Does it, does it differentiate?
Well, yeah, I mean, if you, if typically in a restaurant with Keno, people sit, they play their numbers and they watch the numbers come out.
Yeah.
Are we going to have people sitting in 7-Eleven watching their Keno numbers come out in, in, you know, in part, anywhere around there? And, you know?
I'll find, I'll ask.
Yeah. And that's, that's been a concern at other times when Keno applications have come in. And the board has in the past sent a letter off to the state just expressing our concern about the approval of that particular permit. And really, it seems to me that the state doesn't do much, the lottery officials don't do much about it. But we have done that in the past. There was a request at one other location, I remember. And that was the exact same concern that we had, that it would create a potential for loitering and, you know, take up parking spaces that are supposed to be turning over quickly when you've got, you know, a place like the 7-Eleven. It's supposed to be a quick stop, quick leave, and not a place to sit around waiting for your numbers to come out.
Okay, I'll, I can, I can look into it.
Greg, do you know if there are valid or non-valid objections to this, from this board for a Keno license? Do we need a legitimate reasons? Is there a list of reasons that we would need if we wanted to object?
I mean, I'm, I mean, presumably if it was ever challenged in court, you would have to have reasonable justification for, for denying it. But no, I'm not familiar with Keno enough to know what those reasons may be. But yeah. So some research about Keno. These are good questions. I just, I'm not, not sure.
So if we have, we have, if we have a objection, we have to get it in
Right, and speed of the state.
Pretty quickly. So I mean, we can just voice our, if we have an objection, we can voice it.
Right. I think you're making a valid, a valid, you know, point. The concern should be there because it's not like going to China Ruby and sitting down, you know, playing, you know, Keno.
Exactly. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we've had, we've had other establishments with the exact same concern that we've expressed. And so we could probably, Becky, do you remember who they was, who those were? I'm trying to remember.
Bud variety.
Bud variety.
And the state gave it to them because of the limited parking there.
They didn't give it to them?
They did not give it to them?
No, they gave it to them.
They did. Yeah. We were concerned, but we were concerned in the same way about loitering and people hanging around in parking and issues like that. Not, not that these are bad people, but just that that's not the nature of those particular locations. You know, they set up, you see them out in like a lemon store where they set up like little, little areas where people sit around and, and, you know, it becomes a little, you know, community center for some people to hang out.
All right. So would you like me to draft a letter on behalf of the board to, to voice our objection to?
Not objection, but concern. I mean,
Well, it's objection or nothing, I think, Armand.
Yeah. And then, and then they just deny. I mean, like they either accept the objection or they don't. And it sounds like they probably, they're probably just saying tough, but I can still draft it. And then just if you, if, if that's the, that's the will of the board.
Yeah, I have no concern. I think it's consistent with what we've, what we've expressed in the past.
Oh, so you have no concern about drafting the letter, David? Is that what you're just terrifying?
Right. Yeah. And I, I would think we would pull the letter that we wrote for, for a previous complaint.
We have it.
All right, I'll check that out.
But does that mean we're going to reconvene in a hearing some point between now and the October 16th day? Or are we just sending?
It doesn't, no, I don't.
There's no hearing on this one. I'm not sure.
No, well, it's not, not a hearing, but I think what Jeff's just saying is a meeting because what we're, we're, we're asking Greg to send something, but we don't know what it looks like. And in order to actually vet what we're asking him to send, do we have to meet again before the 16th? I think is what you're trying to say, right, Jeff?
That's my understanding of the letter.
So I, I don't think so. So this is a publicly posted meeting. There, there is, it was right on the, on the agenda that this was a topic of the, of the meeting. Not necessarily your objection, but at least the notice of your consideration of the, of the notice of the Keno license. I, I don't, I might be wrong, not an attorney, but, and I'm no, I'm no expert in everything master of law. But I would say that this is a, a publicly posted meeting with this topic. And this is, that is more than justification for many other things that we do.
Okay, all right.
I mean, no, it's a good, it's a good question. But I'm fairly confident that this checks the box of allowing opportunity as it says. And I appreciate bringing it up, Jeff. It does say the app, in which the applicant appeared or was given the opportunity to appear before the licensing authority to discuss the issue with the local level in an open hearing or meeting prior to the hearing at the MSLC. So, I mean, so be it. If they, if they, if they want to push back on us because of this objection.
I also think that the timing is a little off because unlike a restaurant, you'd have people standing. We want people going into a store and leaving relatively quick.
Exactly.
Pandemic. So I'm, I'm a bit more cautious now than I might be if we didn't have a little pandemic where it wouldn't be an issue if people were hanging around for a few extra minutes at 7-Eleven.
Okay.
And my, my concern isn't just pandemic related, but that makes it even a heightened concern now that you bring that up. I wasn't even thinking pandemic. I was thinking just generally, you know, when, if we were at status quo six months ago, I don't know if, if you want to have Keno in a place that's supposed to be a turnover, quick, quick turnover with limited parking.
So just for a point of order, Greg, once we, um, once we are done with the correspondence items and we vote on those, would we be appro, would it be appropriate to make a second motion to have the town administrator draft the letter voicing our concerns about the issuing of a Keno license to that, you know?
That's all I'm asking you to do. So just.
Or item number, item number D.
Yeah, I was going to ask you to do that, but yes.
All right, okay.
And I remember too, for whatever it's worth, there's something called, and this is all learned as a result of the last discussion we had, there's something called keynote to go, which is keynote, but it's sort of like buying your numbers where you buy them and the numbers show up later and you look them up on the computer. I don't see this request unless I mis, misread it as a keynote to go, but a regular keynote like Chris is describing, where people sit there for a couple of hours while the numbers roll in for, you know, for a while. So this looks to be more of a regular keynote versus keynote to go.
Right. Okay.
Does anyone have any other comments or questions regarding the correspondence?
Yeah, I, I got a quick one on the Lip LEA for 42 Summer Street because that's nice that they got approved and looks like for the six affordable units.
Yeah.
Is that, normally it's a lottery, right, for those units, right? And it, that, that doesn't go into effect until the building gets their occupancy permit. Is that the way it works?
No, they said they may have already, they may, they may be, I don't know if one has to wait until the other. They may have already started the lottery system, but I can, I can find out.
Sorry, this, good morning, Assistant Town Administrator. I was talking to McDonald Development today and they have not set up the lottery yet, but it is the kind of next on the list.
Okay.
But this was a big step in getting the recorded lip document.
Okay.
They have, they have satisfied that part of the agreement. So we're very excited.
I think they're using an independent firm to do the lottery, if I remember.
Yes. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Have anything else? All right. All those in favor? And David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes. And then I will also piggybacking on that, entertain a motion directing the town administrator.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to request the town administrator write a letter outlining our concerns in regards to the issuing of a license for Keno under item D in the correspondence for 7-Elevens requested license.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any other discussion on that? All right. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. So we will continue on consented.
Mike, Greg, I just want to note my specific objection is about the timing of the license with the pandemic, just to make sure that gets in there. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, next is consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the consent agenda, item A, as shown, and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Looks like it is another, Greg, you want to speak to this? It's another request from Metro West Kung Fu.
Right. So Elliot Prisby is just, you know, basically extending the same application he's been doing. And I presume he's trying to maximize as much outdoor time as he possibly can for his business. And we're happy to oblige if we can.
I actually did see, a couple of weeks ago, I did see both Miss Trish's Dance Studio and Metro West Kung Fu on the same property in their respective areas. It was, it was a very full field. And does anyone else have any comments? All right. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. Moving on to the public hearing. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 138 as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 7:10 PM via Zoom remote meeting. Access instructions below. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the application for alteration of premises license off-premise for all alcohol beverages as a common victual license for Maynard Wine and Spirits Incorporated. Doing Business As Maynard Wine and Spirits at Four Digital Way, Maynard, Mass. Manager on record shown as Joseph C. Saya. Copy of application is on file in the Office of the Board of Selectmen. And so the public hearing is now open. Greg?
Yeah, well, it's all good. Mr., well, it's the two of them. So go on to introduce yourselves, gentlemen, and tell us what you're trying to get done now.
Sure. I'm Chris Saya. This is my father, Joe. What we're trying to do is we had 5,000 feet initially planned for the space and we'd like to increase it to close to 8,900. A few reasons why. One is due to the pandemic. We wanted to make it easier for our staff and the customers to maintain social distancing and feel comfortable shopping while they're in the store. Also, we planned a selection for the store. We had a lot of vertical storage. And we thought, you know, that, we realized that this was going to be kind of tall. So we figured to spread everything, same selection, but spread everything out a little bit more. Again, just more to make it more comfortable for people to shop in. And also we could do curbside pickup with the extra space as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for either Chris or Joe?
I don't see a humidor on this, this map.
Well, yeah, you got cigars going.
Humidor, Joe. I'll call you, I'll call you offline, Joe. We'll find, we'll find a humidor. Okay, you got it.
There's a humidor on there. It might, it's on the right side. It should, should be there on the right side.
Road too small. But anyways, yeah. I you know, I actually, from my own perspective and just the reasoning, you know, I appreciate the forethought to, you know, to deal with the issue surrounding the pandemic and the, in the space issues and everything else. So I appreciate the change.
Yeah, same here. I agree. I appreciate the investment.
Yeah, that's where.
I'm hoping you'll still be open long after the pandemic too.
Yeah, I hope so.
So, so as we look at the, as we drive in, right, you guys are to the left of the front door of the Market Basket?
That's correct. So, yeah.
Okay.
It's the paper store and then we would be in the middle. If you, if you've seen that building, the paper store thing's going on the right. If you're facing from the front, the paper store on the right. And then would be us in the middle. And then now on the left, there's that little, the corner when they're on the left that we talked to Capital Group about. Okay.
Okay. Does, so does any more board members have any questions?
I do, Justine. Is, is there any planning board issue relative to the increased size of the building within the development, increased size of a particular, of that particular square, whatever? Am I missing the point here? Because I did shut off the, I had to go for a second. So.
It's a good question. What, what do you think? Is it, because it's not a change in the size of the dimensions of the building. It's just a change.
A change in the size of the square. Is that, does that require any planning board action?
I don't believe so, David, because the, the way I understand it is the building was supposed to have three tenants and now they're just going to have two tenants. So it's like they're, you know, taking over two spots. So I don't, I don't believe that there's any implications on the planning board. They have, they have complete flexibility for kind of the build out for, for the tenants.
Okay.
It's not, I have one other question, although it's not specific to actually the hearing itself. But what do you guys, what's your, what's your timeframe? Do you have a timeframe?
We're hope, best case scenario, which we, you know, this, this took, ended up taking a little bit longer to try and get this into works, but we were hoping for before Thanksgiving. But I think that's, we'd have to get pretty lucky for that to happen. And we have to get all the permits and occupancy approval and all that stuff. So my guess is probably after Thanksgiving and hoping for, you know, right after Thanksgiving or early December is, is my guess.
Thank you. Good luck with the timing.
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. Anyone else from the board have any other questions, other concerns? All right. Being a public hearing, is there any questions or concerns anyone wants to speak to regarding this? Okay. I don't hear anything. So then I will entertain a motion.
Where is the motion to approve the application for alteration of premises license for Maynard Wine and Spirits? Ink Doing Business As Maynard Wine and Spirits at Four Digital Way, Maynard, Massachusetts. Manager on record shown as Joseph C. Saya. This license will be held in the Office of the Selectmen until the final occupancy is completed and issued by the Maynard Building Commissioner in the Maynard Fire Department. The Board of Selectmen is requested to authorize the use of their digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? All right. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we look forward to seeing you open.
Thank you. Good luck. We're excited.
All right. So I, and I should know this. By the end of the night, I'll get good at this. Do I have to have a motion to close or I just close the public hearing?
You can close it.
Thank you. So we're closing this public hearing at 7:48. And then we're going to open another one. Notice is hereby given in accordance with the Mass General Laws, Chapter 94G, in Section 3 as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 6, 2020, at 7:20 PM via Zoom remote meeting. Access instructions below. On the application for a new retail license for a marijuana establishment as a retail off-premise license for Mass Wellspring LLC, DBA Mass Wellspring LLC, 4 to 6 Nation Street, Maynard, Mass. Manager will be Olaf Engare. Copy of application is on file in the Office of the Selectmen. Do I, yes. So sorry about that. Greg?
Right. So this is the, one of the final steps towards Mass Wellspring being allowed to create a marijuana recreational retail establishment in, in Maynard. So, you know, originally it was, it was the standard process. So the first they approached the town and they request to go into negotiations with the town for a host community agreement, which we, we finalized. Then they have to get approval by the Kennis Control Commission, which they got. Then they come back to the town for the license. I'm skipping a lot of intermediate steps, but like this is the big picture stuff. So they come back to the town for the actual license. And, and this is them applying for the license. Now, as you, as you can tell in some of the public content, you know, like there's a couple of other boxes they have to check, you know, before they get an occupancy permit. This is pretty standard for any redevelopment of any site. But, you know, But you know, there, there's some punchless items they have to do and one of which is not insignificant, but it's the security plan. So they, they have to have the chief of police sign off on the security plan. But you can see there's some other items that, that, you know, you know, through working with the DPW and planning, uh, they have to make sure they complete. But, um, they submitted all their, they submitted everything else. Um, and so
Okay.
The, the board can consider the application. So I don't know, mister, I don't, I'm trying to see who's here from, there's a lot of windows open.
Is Olaf here?
Is Olaf here? So by the way.
Yeah, so Olaf is here from Mass Wellspring.
Okay.
Okay. And we do have Attorney Kate Federoff here. She's our, she's our town council.
Hello.
Hi, Kate. Thank you for coming. All right. Uh, does any of the board members have any questions, um, either for Greg or for Olaf?
Uh, I actually do, Justine. Um, uh, actually it's comment. More so, I guess, first off with the chief and then for Kate. I assume, I'm a bit concerned when I've got, um, a thing for approval here in front of me and the chief hasn't signed off yet on a, on a security agreement. And there's some issues with the planning board that haven't been finalized and the, the building commissioner hasn't finalized and, um, et cetera. Is this the, a meeting that is appropriate, should the board, um, agree with my concerns? That we have those answers clarified, um, that we could continue the hearing until a date certain when those items are clarified, unless it's the opinion from the administrator or someone else that we shouldn't be concerned that we don't have a finalized security plan for, uh, for this and that we don't have a finalized, um, you know, issues with the, uh, with the planning board, with the signage and the DPW and the, uh, recon, the construction is still undergoing. I just want to make sure that we're not sort of pushing it further along than we need to and want to make sure that we have the proper, um, you know, that we've done the town, its due diligence in assuring that everything is safe and ready to go and locked up before we approve.
Can I clarify something? And then I do want to hear from Kate, but, um, I, just to clarify, I didn't have an expectation that the board was going to be doing this. And I, and I, and I hope that Kate says, yes, we can table this if, if, if you don't want to vote on this tonight. But, um, the, I, I, I also agree. If the board doesn't feel comfortable with, with approving something because, whether it be the security plan or otherwise, absolutely like that. We, we've set the date for this. You know, we had to post it. So I had to go to the newspaper. So we had to set the date and then we didn't, we're hoping everything would be in line and whatnot.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. Fine. So it's sort of, it's expected in certain circumstances that we would have a continuance of, of the public hearing. And it's not going to cause any problems for anybody, including Olaf.
Well, Mike, Olaf probably won't. So Attorney Federoff, if you could.
So absolutely. So the public hearings work, the way they work is you have to advertise and give a certain amount of lead time, um, for the advertised to run, advertisement to run before the public hearing can open. And then from there, you don't have to re-advertise or anything like that. You have to post in compliance with open meeting law. But as so long as you do a date and time, time certain, um, it's continued to that date and time. And nothing else needs to be done except for to have a discussion about the application. So it is a matter of your comfort level.
Yep. And you know me, I'd like to have things sort of clear before we move forward.
That I do know about you, David.
Especially on this type of topic.
Right.
I'm not picking on them, but we all know that. But, um, to follow up on David, Mike, are we all, are you, are you satisfied, Chief Noble?
Well, I, I met with Olaf yesterday and I gave him my, uh, concerns and what, uh, I felt was needed in their security plan and that. So he is gonna, uh, he advised me, we'll put in those changes. He will put in, uh, that. And then as usual, you always have to wait till the construction's done because you can put it on paper. But if you're not doing it, doing what you put on paper, it's, it's not worth it. So once, once the construction is done, I give a walkthrough and everything is there, then I can give the okay as long as.
To that point, to that point, chief, when is the construction supposed to be completed? Any idea?
Uh, I, I think Olaf told me a couple of weeks, but you'd have to ask him exactly. He, he said it was about 80% done.
Okay.
So I, I have a question for, um, Mr. DiMarco, because I see he's here with us. Justin, what are, what are the, um, expectations of the DPW? Cause you mentioned one, two, three, well, four or five times in the, um, planning with special permit conditions. What, what, do you know what that is about?
Yeah. So Olaf and, um, their special conditions refer to some signage that have to relate to no parking, some upgrades of signs that are already there and some pedestrian, uh, safety signs. Um, they also have to plant four new trees in some of the, um, abandoned tree wells that are adjacent to their, um, their shop. As the town moves forward, we've actually worked with, uh, the previous marijuana vendor and their special conditions. And we came to, uh, a situation where they were able to just, um, pay us for services rendered so that it fits into a larger process. As you know, with the parking authority, we're looking to, um, put some new signage in with the regulatory requirements for parking. But there's a number of signage issues downtown. So myself and Wayne are putting together, uh, a larger plan for the signs. So really, um, in negotiations with Olaf to just settle for, um, a cash distribution in lieu of the special conditions from the planning board, knowing that the town is moving forward with larger projects that have to do with some of those, uh, planning board consent.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions or questions for Olaf? I know he is, like, so he's on call as well. So Olaf, I guess I, I'll ask the question is, you know, it does seem that there's still more construction that needs to get done, um, a, a little bit more, uh, going. How, how do you feel it's going?
It's going, uh, great right now. And, uh, I have to say that maybe I'm misunderstanding what happened in, uh, a few months ago. When Green Star received their approval and their construction is not done. So all I'm asking is that we are treated the same way as they are. Uh, because I believe that they are not complete, they have not completed their construction. And I believe that we are actually further ahead than them in terms of the construction and the completion. So that's the only comment I have right now. And, uh, I think that, uh, I, I already, uh, wrote up, uh, added the changes to the security plan. So, uh, the chief will have it, uh, by end of the week.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments for Olaf? All right. Uh, being a public hearing, does anyone have any questions or comments for anyone in? The police chief, town administrator, uh, Olaf, et cetera?
So Justine, I was muted.
Oh, sorry.
I, I was muted and I, I do have, I do have one question. The one, one, one point of concern in, in Olaf is suggesting that we're treating him differently than, um, we're treating the vendor down the street. But that's not actually the case because our major concern, as far as I can tell, is the, uh, safety and security plan. As when we first took a tour of that building way back, when this process started, that was the major concern of, of Chief Dubois as well. So until that's, until that is, uh, you know, a done deal and the, the police chief signs off, I don't think it's, I don't think it's complete. I don't, I don't think it has anything to do with the construction. It has a thing, for me, it has to do with, you know, when, when that plan is done.
So I, I guess my, my question would, would kind of go back to, bounce back to Kate for a second. Um, is, you know, as far as Olaf referencing that, um, is the board, I believe at this moment still may have a little latitude as far as trying to, you know, take our time with these processes. If we feel that we want to make sure, um, for one reason or another, that this, that this is ready to go and do our due diligence. Uh, but I want to make sure that we're not remiss and we're not, you know, doing something wrong.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it, this is a matter of, um, ensuring that the board has full information. And here at this point, the chief has said he's asked for some changes to the plans. Um, there's also, you know, questions about construction and whatnot. Um, Justin is working with Olaf to figure out the signage. So, so once those assurances are locked down, um, the board can take action very quickly thereafter. You know, it's, it's definitely in your discretion to make sure that you as representatives of the community are protecting their interests. So, you know, it, I don't know if, if you're meeting in two weeks and you could schedule, um, continue it for two weeks, uh, at seven o'clock.
Okay. Does anyone else have any question? Any other board members have any other questions now that Chris is unmuted himself? All right. Uh, being a public hearing, does any, any members of the public have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you hear me? This is Linda Thayer, 14 Chandler Street.
Go ahead, Linda.
I appreciate what, um, what you're all talking about. I appreciate what the applicant is, um, is saying as well. But I do believe, um, as Attorney Federoff just said, that this is the opportunity for the elected officials to make their best judgment in the moment for the community. So I, I appreciate the, um, the comments that a few of the members have made. And I, I think waiting a few more weeks is, um, certainly within the best interest of the town until you folks have the information you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or comments or concerns?
But it sounds like we'll have the chief, uh, the security plan will be in Chief Noble before two weeks, but I'm not so certain we'll have the DBW issues worked out in the next two weeks. Justin, am I correct in saying that?
No, that might not be true. So, um, I, I reached out to Olaf today. We're really, really close. I think we actually agreed upon a number. I just need him to confirm it in an email and then they would have to cut a check to the town and we would receive it and then I would give the blessing. Um, Bill Nemser already confirmed that the planning board was fine with that as we did it to the 2024 development already.
Okay. In that case, two weeks sounds logical to me, Justine.
Excellent. All right. Um, then I think what I will do, yes?
Hi, Marie Gunnison, 119 Parker Street. I'm sorry to come into this late and I'm sure that the, all the appropriate officials have weighed in on this. I just did have a question regarding, uh, parking, um, just as a resident in using the area. And even though not all the stores and storefronts are full, parking does seem to be an issue already in downtown Maynard. I wondered how that was addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Gunnison. Uh, Greg, I don't think we have anyone, I don't think we have anyone from planning here today.
No, but it's, but that, that, that's a great question, Ms. Gunnison. Thank you for bringing it up. So planning is absolutely, uh, the forefront of downtown improvement and sort of, and sort of like our, our focus of planning for downtown. So, and it's been no, no small endeavor to get a good grip on, on plan, on parking and whatnot. So fortunately we have Megan Sumudo, the Assistant Town Administrator, who's been in, in charge of the parking authority that is specifically looking at that. And as it pertains to this site, um, that has been, that has been a topic of discussions from, from day one. So the idea is to have, have, and Olaf can get into the details, but the idea is to, is, um, basically no standing, so to speak. So, um, they have to buy, buy appointment only. There's no loitering, so to speak, within the store. Um, you go in, you take your, you take your goods and you, and you, and you move along. The idea is to kind of keep the traffic flowing, um, as best case can be. But, but certainly parking was, is, is a consideration. Megan, can you speak anymore to that? Or Olaf, do you want to speak more to that?
Um, just briefly, some of the mitigation that Justin was referring to is a part of our parking management plan. And, um, what we're, what the parking authority is trying to do is, um, you know, create and adjust signage so that, and, and work on enforcement frankly, so that there is, um, different types of parking for different users. So there's very short-term, midterm and longer-term parking. So we're trying to make sure we're capturing that mix in the downtown. Um, so, and you know, have a map that can promote where people can park if you're going to stay for the day or if you're going to, you know, do a 15-minute kind of in and out, um, errand. So some of the, um, some of the funding that Justin and Olaf were referring to is to go to that plan to assist with our signage. Um, and that's our parking management plan that, um, you know, came to this board earlier in the summer. But this site does not, I don't think, and Olaf can correct me, I don't believe the site has specific customer parking assigned. Is that, is that correct, Olaf?
That is correct. So we will, uh, operate by appointments only initially. And also, uh, the planning board expressed desire that we would have a police detail present, uh, initially until, uh, the police chief thinks are not needed any longer. Uh, we will encourage all the customers to park behind our building. Um, so I, I don't foresee that we would have an issue with, uh, causing traffic.
And am I, am I to understand that you paying for that detail or, or is the town paying for the detail?
No. They would be paying.
Olaf is paying.
Go ahead, go ahead, Olaf.
No, this is, uh, yeah, they, they have to go before the planning board again if there's the, to, to go about the traffic studies in three months after they open. Uh, so to, to discuss any of the issues that I have that, that it's caused or that, that. So that can be addressed if it does become a problem.
One of the other issues that has arisen, um, since we first had the discussion on this particular location was the other business that is located there. And I forget what it is, what it's called there, right? Where the old CVS is.
Art Center.
Art, yeah. Where there, they own that parking lot in the back is my understanding. And part of the security plan, if not part of the delivery plan for Olaf's business was intended, my recollection is to use that area as a way to deliver, um, you know, substance of produce, whatever it's called, uh, to deliver product, I guess is what I should say. So with the knowledge that that is private property there, how, if at all, does that change the delivery process? Will public property, namely the street on Nason Street, have to be used more often for delivery? Um, I don't know how this stuff gets delivered, if it's by truck, if it's by secure van or if it's by, um, just some car. I don't know. But how, if at all, does the, does the introduction of the private property in the back that was part of your delivery, uh, plan at the outset affect things at this point?
I don't believe that's correct. Uh, we, I, I don't know frankly, what you're referring to regarding the private parking.
But can you speak without, without giving detail? So you can't give it, so without giving away sort of like, tells a treaty plan? No, we're not trying to compromise. Can you give like an overview of your delivery? So really what, what David's getting at is will you be delivering in the front or you be in the back? And again, if you feel, or chief can step in, if you feel like, if you feel like that's.
Yeah, that's probably not best to go, but it, I, it is one, it was one of my concerns that has to be addressed.
Okay.
Yeah. It's probably not best to talk about it in an open meeting.
Okay, fair enough. And then, but that emphasizes how important it is that we not make any decisions right now. If delivery is still on the table and hasn't been signed off on.
I agree.
Yeah.
Do you have any more comments from any of the members of the public?
Uh, Madam Chair, Linda Thayer, 14 Chandler Street again.
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. Um, did the police chief say that there, there will or will not be a detail officer on that? I, I didn't quite get that.
There, there will be.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, then I think at this point, what I would do is entertain a motion to, uh, would postpone.
Continue. You would just want to continue the hearing to a date certain.
Yeah.
You need a motion for that, Kate? Do you need a motion to continue?
Yes, you need a motion to continue, um, specifying the date and time of the next hearing.
Okay. I will entertain such motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing until, let me get out my calendar. Olaf, you said you think in two weeks you'll, you'll be at least able to come and then we'll see where we're at. So I would say October 20th, we'll continue. able to come and then we'll see where we're at. So I would say October 20th, we'll continue this hearing till October 20th at 7:30 PM.
Yeah, that's fine. The police chief said to have the updated security plan by end of the week. And DPW, I think that is just an email away. So that works for us.
Okay. Sorry, Jeff, you seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion, any additional discussion? All right. Then all in favor, David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah, it's still me. Yes.
Sorry. And I'm a yes as well. All right. And then I'm going to close the public hearing at eight 10 PM. Okay? All right, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. You guys see you in two weeks.
Bye, Kate. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to shift this around just a little bit. We are still going to do the Mater Police, but we're going to do a quick presentation first and then do the appointments. And it is, the presentation is going to be of our jail diversion program. And Chief, you want to speak to this real quick?
Sure. The Mater Police Department, along with the surrounding towns, you know, we, we understand like the climate today. But a lot of people are talking about the fund the police and it's because we should put more effort and emphasis towards the social work aspect, the medical aspect that police take on. We're ahead of the curve. We've always been. Approximately five years ago, we looked into hiring a jail diversion program coordinator through Elliott Services. And what that is, is that's basically mental health calls and your substance abuse calls that, you know, we initially respond, but we know, you know, we, we aren't the problem solvers of those kind of calls. We can take care of, temporarily take care of the issue, but we can't take care of the overall. So the surrounding towns knew that you couldn't hire a person full-time for each, each department. It just wouldn't have made fiscal sense. It wouldn't have made that. So we pooled our resources and we got a grant and we started the jail diversion program. Since that time, it's worked phenomenally, you know. Mackenzie, teacher who's a current jail diversion clinician, she follows up on any substance abuse call. She follows up on any mental health call. But she doesn't just follow up with the person that's involved. She follows up with the families. She follows up with, with the people that, you know, need to be supported through these calls, you know, if there's an overdose death or something to that. She facilitates services that they can get, whether it's free services or, you know, through their insurance. It's, it's a, it's a perfect program because we realized that these calls, you know, we got to, they have to be diverted from the law enforcement aspect into more of the rehabilitation and medical aspect that they really should fall under. Mackenzie's on right now, if you have any specific questions. But I will say this, I had a staff meeting this morning and one of the supervisors told me about one of our cases, which we've had a problem with him for the last two, three years. Substance, more alcohol abuse and mental health issues. Well, his son said he's going to the gym now. He hasn't been drinking, he hasn't had a problem. We haven't had a call since July and we didn't go. We got four or five calls at least a month on this guy, you know, and we haven't had a call since July. So I mean, that's the type of thing that, that works. We don't have the ability, the training to follow up with those type of calls. And that's why this works so well because Mackenzie has the training.
Great. Thank you very much. Mackenzie, do you want to say a little bit about yourself and a little bit about your work here?
Um, sure. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any type of questions anyone might have. I mean, Chief Noble did a good job kind of explaining what my role was, but it's, it's really a partnership with the police officers and, you know, creating that connection to services and diverting them from the criminal justice system rather than, you know, going in with, you know, the, with the police officers and doing the normal booking process. And, you know, I'm constantly impressed by police officers within Maynard PD amongst my other police departments because they clearly already have the skills to, you know, be working with these people who are struggling with mental illness and with substance abuse issues. So we work together very well. We're able to learn from each other and, you know, we follow people through the hospital. You know, the data really does support that this program has been successful in, in Maynard and the surrounding towns.
I will say this also is having Mackenzie or somebody outside of a, a uniformed police officer helps because many people won't talk to us, you know. I know it's hard to believe, but somebody that's on drugs or whatever doesn't want to talk to a cop about their problems of what they're doing. That's one of the other things that helps, having somebody be able to, you know, talk to them on that aspect, get them help from a non-law enforcement side. They will accept the help a lot easier a lot of times because they think, you know, either we're trying to trick them or we're trying to do that. So that, that's a major part of this that we're, you know, they won't come, come talk to us, but they will talk to Mackenzie and whoever she helps, you know, sends them to.
Yeah.
But.
Oh, I was just going to say, a lot of the, the programs surround is, you know, surrounded by de-escalation on scene. And, and you know, like Chief Noble said, people are more willing to talk to a clinician over an officer sometimes. And, you know, making that connection, being kind of liaison between the community and the police department has been, I think, a really makes this program really valuable for the town.
Thank you. David, you have a question?
No, it was a comment more so. I just want to express first off my thanks to Mackenzie, but also to the chief and the Maynard Police Department because, you know, the politics in our country these days relative to, you know, the police and the chief mentioned it, defund the police. I think there's been a misnomer in that and what people's real thoughts are. And what we, by being ahead of the curve as we are here, I think this program in many ways reflects exactly what people are talking about relative to the police. You know, the, the, the police are not trained in mental health issues, not trained in drug abuse issues, not trained in those areas. And so the, the, you know, too often, the police arrive on the scene and, you know, intentions inflate because as you said, Chief, you know, especially somebody who might be under the influence doesn't want to speak to a police officer. And so it, it escalates and it becomes a violent issue versus an issue of a peaceful res- resolution with somebody who's trained to de-escalate the situation. So I'm proud of the Maynard Police Department for being ahead of the, the curve in this area. And I'm happy to see that we're doing this. And Mackenzie, thank you. I'm sure not only the gentleman that, that the chief spoke about, but many others who you've dealt with, I'm sure have been touched by your help and have found themselves learning that they, you know, that they can move their life in a different direction in a way that can, can improve themselves. And thank you so much to both of you for this program. I'm really, I'm really happy to see it.
Dave, to even further expand on what, what you were saying too is, so you get that call where the person is, you know, violent in this. Well, without this program, you know, we may PCM, you know, wrestle with them, throw them in the jail cell, then throw them out. Then we're back at that call again and again and again, you know, because we don't have the tools to do anything after the fact that, that they do. That, that's what really is, is helpful that, yes, we might have to go to that call once, but then we get that person to help and then they're not, we're not responding to that call repeatedly.
Chief, have we seen any major increase or decrease presumably as a result of the pandemic in, in substance abuse calls or, or for this program? And Mackenzie, maybe the same question for surrounding communities as well?
Yes, I actually posed that to Mackenzie probably a couple of months ago and she says absolutely is. And it goes hand in hand, kind of, the substance abuse and mental health calls that there, it definitely is a, is a uptick. I, I think Mackenzie can answer it better, but a lot of it is the services they can't get to sometimes that they usually would get to because of the pandemic. Mackenzie, you can probably answer that better than I can.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, like Chief said, it's a lot of services that aren't accessible to people, you know, that AA meetings are being held virtually. A lot of outpatient hospital programs are being held virtually. And when you have a substance abuse disability or if you have a psychiatric disability, that accountability is just not there a lot of times. And you're not, I mean, it's like trying to get kids to attend school virtually. That it's not always, it's, if you can't self-motivate, it's not going to be effective and you're not going to get the same results. The same thing goes for people who, you know, the frequent flyers where, you know, the police are getting called, they're hearing voices. They're, you know, they're having these issues and we just come to a roadblock because there's not, there's nothing we can do about it. We can up their medication possibly, but other than that, you know, we can't get them into programs. It's just the, the resources aren't there. And, you know, I, I can say in most of all of my towns, my referral rate has almost doubled for, for mental health and substance abuse referrals just since March of this year.
And so does that overwhelm you or, or your group in, in being able to do effectively what you're able to do if there's just a doubling of, of the, the types of calls for support that you're used to?
It's certainly a, a larger workload, but with the pandemic also comes that we're not, I'm not going out into houses as much. We're doing telecourt now. A lot of my work has become virtual. So the ride time from town to town and to house to house is, is decreased. I'm only going in emergency situations or if, you know, if I don't think I'll be effective virtually. So kind of evens out, but it's certainly an increase in work for me.
So let me, let me kind of phrase the same question another way. If, let's say, you know, with continued just in high levels of unemployment, if we see these kind of calls get worse, how would we know or what could we do about it if there needed to be increased funding? I guess it's, we're starting to get into more of the budgetary question of this. How would we know if this, this program needed to be expanded just because use of it is expanding at a rate which couldn't be kept up with?
We, I can answer part of that too is, you know, we have regional meetings, which is the Central Mass Police Partnership Meetings. And that's part of the discussion, like how, how the calls, how can we better, you know, assist the people that, that were helping. So if there was a funding issue, it, you know, there was a few years back and, you know, we took money from one of our funds to supplement the cost of it because the grant wasn't as much as, as it usually is. But yeah, we would, we would, we would try to find funding as all the other towns to, if we had to, like, say, put on another clinician or put on that. Because it is so important, that's how we.
Yeah, I think you're, you're answering what I'm asking. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Mackenzie or Chief?
I have one more. Mackenzie, you mentioned you were impressed with the services by our police department compared to our neighboring towns, which I thought was a strong statement. What are we doing right? Let's phrase it in a positive way.
And when I say neighboring towns, I, I mean, I'm impressed by the police officers that I work with. I am part of a statewide jail diversion program clinician meeting where I talk to other clinicians from other departments and kind of hear what they're doing versus what, what I'm doing. And, you know, I, I just, I feel very grateful that I have the support of my officers in terms of, you know, I'll do a lot of involuntary commitments where, you know, I'll need police officers to be going with me to be signing off on things, you know, to explain things to me. And they're always willing to do that. I never get any pullback, which I, I get the impression other police departments might do. Like I said, not the ones that I work with, but for other clinicians. And then specifically, I mean, when I go into households and I'm talking to somebody who's agitated, who's, who's in a mental health crisis, sometimes I, the officers jump right in and they know what to say and they can de-escalate it and they don't even need me. Especially, you know, when it's a dangerous situation, if someone's under the influence or they're maybe, you know, in a manic state, the police officers are, are quick to jump in front of me. They're, they're quick to protect me as their clinician. And I think they can, they do a very good job of de-escalating on their own as well. So it's very impressive.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. Thank you, Bill.
No worries.
Anyone else have anything? I just want to thank Mackenzie and, and the chief for bringing this forward because I know I became aware. I was, I was doing a police interview a few months ago and, and I became aware of the fact that Mackenzie was, and I know that we, we'd had another, another worker before that. But I just didn't realize how much of an impression they made and how much they helped the officers and, and what a part of the department it really, they really are. And I just felt that it was important that we all know that this resource is out there and that our department is using it. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it.
On a final note too is, I, I put it in the letter that I explained, Mackenzie has a very, very impressive, you know, history, work history and resume. Which goes a long way with her help.
All right. Anyone else? Anything? All right. Thank you very much, Mackenzie. We appreciate your time coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie.
All right. Then I will turn it to the next, which is the appointments and promotions. Chief, you want to talk about them and then we'll do the motions?
Yeah, let me just make sure that they've been sitting around so that they, they get on.
Call everyone back.
Okay, this is just a. Okay.
Is my camera not working?
We can.
Your camera's not working, but your, your audio.
Says it's on.
No.
Well, I, I guess it's that too.
It's coming.
Okay. This past year, you know, we had a lot of turnover, a lot of retirements and that. So we announced a promotional exam in April that would be, you know, giving, we, by our policies, 120 days to study. It was given in September. And for the lieutenant's position, Sergeant Brian Cushing talked both the test and the assessment. Brian's been the senior sergeant for a little while now. And he has, you know, in that time, attended leadership courses. He's shown leadership to the younger officers as we come on. And as you know, we have a young department right now. In that time, he's taken over the court liaison role since Lieutenant Jones retired. So he's aptly qualified. Expect a, a lot out of him because this is, this is a, an upper level command position. And he'll, he'll do well at it. So I present Brian Cushing for the position of permanent lieutenant.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any, anything they want to say to Brian? Any questions?
I do. First off, congratulations, Brian. You know, happy for you. And just from a personal standpoint, I've known Brian for quite some time and always have found him to be a pleasurable police officer and somebody who I highly respect and think he's a great representative of our community. My question for the chief is, can you just describe for the residents that are watching, because we now, you know, we, we added the, the deputy chief's position and everything else. And can you describe the, the structure now within the police department that we will have? Just so everybody understands and how it fits in from, from not only from a, an organizational chart, but from a budgetary chart too, because that's always been the concern of the residents when you're talking about, you know, there was, there's now a new deputy chief. So if you could summarize that for us?
Absolutely. We, I, I, back in, yeah, April, you had approved my command restructure. And what that was is to have changed the structure of a deputy chief and five sergeants to four sergeants, a lieutenant and a deputy chief. Excuse me. Yeah, there was a lieutenant, five sergeant. The problem was is the lieutenant's, old lieutenant's position had a conflict of interest and also had so many duties that he worked so much overtime. You know, he had to, to complete all his duties, he had to work a, a lot of overtime. And that costs a lot more on the budget. With this restructure, I was able to submit a budget that was less than the year before because when you restructure and you put the deputy chief in place, he has to do most of the duties that I had without working overtime. Now, because he's not going to work overtime completing all duties, we had to create the position of lieutenant to add duties to that position to offset what the duties would be. However, the union agreed to take a reduction in pay from what the old lieutenant was. However, the union agreed to take a reduction in pay from what the old lieutenant was. With this, it creates less overtime. It creates less, they're like, the deputy chief has to come in. An example is a special time meeting. If the lieutenant would have run that, he would have got overtime for that. He'd get overtime for any of those to call up. Now that's part of his duties. So that's how it saves money by not having to pay. The, the old lieutenant's position, when I did a budgetary analysis of it, cost at least forty something thousand dollars in overtime to do all of the other duties that the deputy chief will have to do now. That is part of his regular duties. Now again, some of the duties have been shifted to the lieutenant. And the lieutenant now this, but it also creates a succession planning, which makes the department much more efficient, you know? So that person is ready to move up the chain of command. And we don't have a position where we have to go outside because somebody wasn't ready because they did, they weren't prepared to take that next move. If that, if that explains it best enough, but.
Oh, no, thank you. And I, I, mostly for public information. It's important that people see that this isn't a, a cost raising effort. This is a cost savings effort. And so that's all I wanted to, to get out there. But again, Brian, congratulations.
Thank you very much. And again, it, it was, that's, the union signed off on it because it does make the department much more efficient, more opportunities in this. But also, if you look at my budget submission, we, we could ask for less because we're not paying the overtime that we, we did to that position prior to this. And we didn't add personnel. I want to get that clear. There was no personnel. It was a realignment, you know, restructuring.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for chief or Brian? All right. I, I, I do want to say congratulations, Brian. Good luck. I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I could do that. I move to appoint Brian Cushing to the rank of lieutenant to the Maynard Police Department with effective date of October 7, 2020.
Authorizing the.
No, it's a rights to use of digital signature if approved.
I have a second? Thank you, Chris. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Absolutely yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Lieutenant Cushing.
Thank you very much.
All right. And moving on again, so chief?
Well, with now Lieutenant Cushing, that leaves a sergeant's position open, you know? And we, again, I should have probably gone into more of the assess, testing and assessment, which was done by Fred Ryan Strategies. He's a well-respected person. You know, he, he is very tough in the sense that this isn't something that anybody could pass the test. And, you know, in previous tests, people have failed. And people have failed this test, you know, that were taking it too. So it's a very good assessment of this. Detective Manchuso did well on the test and did excellent on the assessment. They, they said, you know, she was one of the best she's, they've seen in a while on the sergeant's assessments. In her relatively short time here, when you, when you think about like her rank, she has done more than most. You know, she's on the NEMLEC negotiators team. She was the SRO. She was sexual assault investigator. She's an Alice instructor and, and many other trainings. She was always the one to hound myself or Chief DeBois. Can I go to this training? Can I go to that training? Which shows a lot because, you know, it shows the motivation that she wanted to learn and, and get better and, you know, at some point move up the ladder. She's been, you know, one of those people that you get rid of an assignment, she'll take it and she'll do it with a smile, you know? And when she was in the SRO position, I think she took it to, you know, another level in the sense of that the schools were very impressed with her and, you know, were calling her to do more than she should, she actually should have been, but she was always willing to do it. So I present her for the sergeant's position. And not that it matters, but she'll be the first female sergeant on the Maynard Police history.
Very good, very good. Anyone have any comments, questions for either Trista or, or Chief Noble?
I would make the same type of comments that I made about Brian for Trista. Very highly respected. And I think the community will be very well served with Trista in a, a leadership role. And chief, despite what you said, and, and it is kind of unfortunate that it has to be even brought up, but I think it is a tremendous situation where we have a woman as a sergeant in Maynard. I think that that's a huge step to show that Maynard is an inclusive town and that we are moving forward. And so I'm very happy for that. And although I think Trista is obviously a wonderful candidate, regardless of woman or not woman, she's just a wonderful police officer. I've had great interactions with her. And actually, she did an investigation for me where I had some issues on my own. So, and I found her to be, you know, very, very professional in that area as well. So thank you and congratulations, Trista.
That was my point, that she accomplished this. And she is the first female. This is all her accomplishments.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Just, I, I agree. I have to echo what David said. I've, I've worked with you occasionally on some, on some things and you have done a great job. And I really appreciate what you've added to the department. And I look forward to seeing what you do in the future.
Thank you, Justine.
All right. So then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to appoint Trista Mantusco to the rank of sergeant to the Maynard Police Department with effective date as of November 7, 2020. And to authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Armand. All, all in favor? David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that. All right, thank you. Now we're going to move on to another public hearing. My apologies for the late hour. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 138, is amended that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 6, 2020 from at 7:40 via Zoom remote meeting. Access instructions below. The Board of Selectmen will vote on the application for amendment, application for a change of beneficial issuance of stock and change of manager, Anita Adhikari, on premise for all alcohol beverages as a common victular license for Ganapati Baba Incorporated, DBA Cafe of India at 155 Main Street, Maynard, Mass. A copy of the application is on file in the Office of the Board of Selectmen. Greg?
So Cafe of India is a, is a well, well-respected, well-known establishment down the street from Town Hall. And my understanding is it's a family business and they want to expand the manager to a relative. But I, I think she should introduce herself. So Anita, go ahead. Who are you and what are you trying to do?
Oh, you're on. You're muted. Anita, you're muted.
Hi, do you see Anita?
Yeah.
Hi, Anita.
Hi. Yes, I, we got the, and the main at the restaurant.
Okay. And, and what are you, and what are you looking to do here?
This, this is the family business was before there. We got right now. The partner, the partner, he, he, he left. And then I got my name in there.
Okay.
Okay. So it's just a change of the manager?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Does anyone have any questions for Anita? Concerns? All right. Being a public hearing, does anyone, any residents have any questions? Concerns for Anita or for the board? All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the application for amendment for a change of beneficial interest and change of manager to Anita Adhikari for Ganapati Baba Inc. Doing business as Cafe India at 155 Main Street, Maynard. The Board of Selectmen is requested to authorize the use of digital signatures by the Office of Selectmen to process this application as well.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And then I will close the public hearing at 8:40 PM.
Okay. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a good night. Good luck.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. So moving on, we have a, a change of manager for the common victory license at 110 Grill in Maynard. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the change of manager license for 110 Grill, Maynard to Stephen Melendez. Board approved to application at the board meeting of the September 15, 2020. And the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission approved on September 23, 2020. Authorize use of digital signature if approved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris.
So we approve, we approve this one on the, in September. Is that correct?
Yes.
But it's a change.
It's just a change of, of manager.
Yep.
So it went through the A B C and it, it, all the paperwork was accurate. So it was approved that fast. Okay. All right. Anyone have any questions? Oh, Chris left.
I don't know.
All right. All right. All in favor? Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you.
I figured you must be babysitting, Chris. You went like, time to, time to burp the baby or something.
I babysat this afternoon.
All right.
I forgot how you ju, how high you jump when a baby makes a single noise.
A while. All right. We'll move to the intra, intra-governmental agreement with the Maynard School Department. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the intra-governmental agreement with the Maynard School Department related to the sharing of responsibilities of the management of facilities and supervision of the Director of Building Operations position. And I will authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Greg, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. So, so the district, the school district and the town have been collaborating for months now towards the establishment of this new position, the Director of Building Operations. It will primarily and nearly entirely fall under the supervision of the superintendent's office. But from time to time, there may be some special projects require cooperation with the town. So there are only the three major facilities for the schools and a number of smaller facilities for the town. But it's, it's important for the schools to have the resources they need into this position to, to manage those, to manage those facilities and all of that. So our Director of Building Up, our, our Director of Public Works, who's Justin Marco, is also the facilities manager. He has some supervision responsibilities for, for this position. But we will be working as we already have with them and try to. Tim, Tim McDuff is, is the actual person in this, in this role. To give him the resources he needs to be successful in this facilities management. This agreement is between the town and the school department. So it kind of, it kind of is a formalized understanding between, you know, as I wrote it, intra-government. So it's between, it's between the two HDs within the same organization, you know, between the town. So it's, it's unique, but it's important to have, to have a sort of formalized understanding of, 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 of that collaboration. And all, and all, you know, like in a perfect world, you know, maybe we wouldn't have to have such formalized agreements and we would all work together for, you know, forever. But just for each party's protection and just sort of like making sure we're, we're all on the same page, we have a formalized agreement. I was in conversation with the superintendent. My understanding is the school committee already approved this. Not to say that the Board of Selectmen are required to approve it just because the school committee did, but just as for context, it's been approved on their end.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions? For Greg or Justin? I know Justin's on as well. All right. I think this is a great, I think this is great. I'm glad we finally got it done. I know we approved it in the last, the, the May town meeting, I think. 2019. So, no, I think this is a long time coming. So I, I thank everyone for coming together and, and doing the negotiations and getting this done.
We look forward to the collaboration.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So all in favor, Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So that is approved.
I was able to get the map to open correctly. I know I had a problem earlier on a completely different device. It's still not working on one. So there's clearly some rendering issues on some devices. I don't know why, but I, I do have the correct version of the map now. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
I don't know.
We'll make sure the one that's signed has the right.
As long as Tim has the right version.
The two baseball fields are not next to each other anymore.
Baseball fields are not in the auditorium.
Yeah, they're not.
In the middle of the woods.
Yeah, somewhere. Good.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Moving on, we're going to discuss COVID-19. Greg, or you want Megan to take this?
Just as an introduction at least.
Okay.
So Halloween is just one of the many topics that, that is starting to come up with the pandemic. Like, you know, who knows how long this is going to go into? So I'm sure there'll be many more topics that we're going to have to discuss and make sure we're all feeling the same about it. But this was one of the number of topics at the, oh, I don't know if this one was in particular, but there was a couple of topics that the Board of Selectmen had requested the input from the Board of Health. So, so that is the case. And you can see it gets into it a little bit. Halloween was one of those topics that was talked about by the Board of Health and it is heavily influenced by direction from the state. Now, just as a, as a note to the public, Halloween is not an official holiday and it's not an official town event. So although the town has endorsed demonstrations of Halloween, like the, like the downtown trick or treat is not, and it, and, and by the way, unfortunately, the downtown trick or treat is not happening this year. But it's a, it's kind of an awkward position for the town to, to impose a certain authority over Halloween to cancel it or otherwise. In other towns, they can do it. And, and if there was a need for public safety, as may be the case in this, yes, the town can sort of enact measures to, for the, for the public good to, to, to preserve the public safety. But anyways, that's just, that's just a sort of context. I want to, so Megan, do you want to speak, call on the public content? But if, Megan, you want to speak to what the perspective was from the Board of Health?
Sure. Yep. So I know this has been discussed recently. And the Board of Health brought it up at their meeting. Some of the things that came up were they were waiting on the state to provide their guidance at the meeting, which has since come out. But it really is kind of mirroring the CDC guidance, which was out at the time of the meeting. So it's not, nothing kind of brand new. But I think the Board of Health was wondering, you know, if there was going to be kind of a more regional approach to trick or treating and thinking about those types of activities. And it doesn't seem like there is right now. You know, it does seem like we have 351, you know, independent cities and towns still kind of doing what, what they would like to do. One thing that our health agent, Kelly Colletronic, brought up was, you know, to restrict cultural activities that could lead to, you know, kids going to other towns. And, you know, that's, that's hard too. So I just, I wanted to make sure that perspective was in there because I think that was kind of heard loud and clear by, by the Board of Health. But, you know, I think their, their thought process was to promote the CDC's recommendation. Traditional trick or treating is listed as high risk. You know, there's other ways to kind of make it a little more safe that the CDC kind of outlines by, you know, individual. You know, individual candy bags kind of spaced out, you know, wiping things down. So, but I'll tell you, you know, at their meeting, they did not feel compelled to kind of weigh in on cancellation since it is kind of an opt-in community event. But I'm happy to answer any questions. I did also attach the draft minutes. You could kind of see some of the conversation.
Would have any questions for Megan about that?
I mean, if it's not a town-sponsored event, what would a cancellation even mean? I'm still.
You know, it happened last year too, Jeff, when there was a weather event. And, you know, I think other, it's tricky because other communities do take. You know, kind of different perspectives on it, I think. You know, I think when there was a weather event last year, there are other communities that said, we're going to switch to a different day. Or a different time. I think, you know, Worcester has recently suggested the cancellation. They're also in a different place right now, I think, with their, with their numbers of cases.
Yeah.
So I, you know, could this be a different conversation if. You know, God forbid our numbers were to tick up potentially. But yeah, I mean, from the enforcement perspective, I don't know if she's on or I think he's on, but, you know, I don't, I can't imagine how we would be able to, you know, enforce a ban.
No. So it would be an advisory.
It'd be, yeah, it'd be an advisory. I think that would be an appropriate role if the board were to, you know, maybe discourage it or, you know, however you want it. However you want to do it, but the enforcement piece would probably not be, you know, stopping people from doing it.
There was one year that we actually did, the town did cancel Halloween. We had a snowstorm that then rendered the entire town. Without power and we were, I think we were without power for close to a week at that point. And there were trees down and wires down and everything else. And we did cancel Halloween and, you know, Maynard being Maynard, there were all sorts of things that popped up that time. But today, I think it was today that the governor actually said that. You know, and it makes sense. He said that the fact that he did not call for a statewide ban on trick or treating. Was because he feared that what would happen then is that people would then gather together in parties. And parties would be even worse than having people roam around, you know, knocking on doorbells. So that, but they are encouraging, according to the governor today, that people not do much more than put out a platter of candy or whatever on their, on their. Front porch. They really are not encouraging doorbell ringing and, you know, yelling in people's faces. Trick or treat or whatever, but they're trying to control it, I think, through their actions. And I think the governor's point made sense that, yeah, that probably would have happened. People would have gone to parties and it would have been encouraging bigger gatherings.
Because that's, they were considering things like those trunk or treat where you go and you take, you get candy out of, you get a large group of people at maybe the Elks or the Rod and Gun or something. And I agree, David, that it's one of those things that that would just be, you know, putting more people in closer quarters than the Halloween part. And I'm wondering that, I know that, I think that she's already been involved in some of the conversation and I realize he's, I think, busy right now. But if we can put out some kind of guidance similar to the CDC type of thing where, you know, I mean, we do, they do a typical Halloween guidance, but this really needs to be amped up a little bit. And it really needs to be promoted a lot more. And one of the main things, you know, how to keep yourself safe, how to keep your kids safe, you know. But the other part of it is also respect your neighbors. And if for some reason, you know, if you are okay participating in trick or treat and you're, you know, and someone's going to knock at the door, even though we don't recommend that. Leave your light on. And if you do not want to participate, leave your light off and don't go to doors that have, that the lights are off. You know, respect your neighbors, respect where we're at. And I think that's a message that we really kind of have to get out there. If we are going to, you know, basically let people do their own thing as far as Halloween with their comfort level.
Madam Chair, I totally agree. And I was about to start pushing out the state guidance before, you know, I realized this was going to be an agenda topic. Because even though we still have a few weeks, it's on people's minds and it's coming up a lot. And, you know, this could be an opportunity and, you know, I plan to promote it more than our typical safety tips. But it could also be an opportunity for, you know, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, you know, joint statement or, you know, something, you know, as we've kind of discussed previously to just put out where you're coming from. You know, you both have discussed it at your meetings. This is kind of, you know, some of the thoughts that you have. So that could be in addition to, you know, the standard town communication.
I agree. I think that, I forget when you said that the Board of Health are meeting again.
Meeting on the 27th, but I think that if we were to draft something and, you know, send it to them individually to review, I, you know, I think we could probably get something out sooner if that was, that was your interest.
All right.
I'll notice part of that, that we're seeing case counts in Massachusetts rise and we're starting to hit some of the numbers that we saw back in, I think it was May or in the spring. So it's, what had been at a low but persistent rate is now a low and rising rate in the state. And as we know, these things tend to trend for at least a few weeks before dying back, if they die back. So it's, you know, not a good time for people to be mingling or unnecessarily exposing themselves to the virus.
So how about this? We could, so one, we'll do all those things. So we'll, so we'll beef up the police's notice. We'll throw something on our webpage, you know, that kind of draws attention to the CDC guidance and the Board of Health's sort of endorsement of that guidance. And what sounds like the Board of Selectmen's endorsement of that guidance.
And Greg?
What's that?
The state guidance.
The state guidance.
Yes.
And then, and then draft a joint statement. On behalf of the Selectmen and the Board of Health. And y'all are meeting on the 20th, so we could have you guys approve that joint statement. And then we'll see about getting approval or some sort of consent. I don't know. We'll figure it out for the Board of Health and.
Probably, I mean, and I think it's great to put, I actually do think it's great to put out a joint statement between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health. I think that communication to the residents has to come before that just because people are, like I said, people are already talking about it.
We can put up that.
We're getting phone calls.
Yeah, we can put that up either tomorrow or.
If that's going.
Soon. Like we'll get that up as soon as possible. And I already, I already sent a message out to the department side. If you get a phone call about it, like you say, like. Please follow all state, federal, local, you know, guidance. Like, don't, yeah. Yeah, we can do all that.
Okay. So basically that's kind of where we're, that's the, I just want to clarify. So that's the, that's the direction we're going is, is. In theory, we're just weighing in on our recommendations on how, if you're going to celebrate Halloween. If you choose to celebrate Halloween, then this is the safest, this is, these are the safe guidelines, safer guidelines that we encourage.
Well, is that, is that what the guidelines say? Because what I'm hearing from Megan is that it says the guidelines list trick or treating as a high-risk activity. So are we in effect recommending people not trick or treat?
Well, so the CDC guidelines risk traditional, they list traditional trick or treating as high risk, but they did offer ways for people to, you know, get the experience. That was like more of a moderate risk. So they lay out different things like pumpkin carving is a low risk, you know. So, but, but yeah, so and I think the typical, you know, ring on the door, get the candy, that they did list that as high risk. So, you know, if people want to do it, they list ways to make it safer and they get more of a medium.
Are we doing pumpkin carving on town hall's lawn, which could technically?
I didn't think, I just wanted to see.
No, I just, I talked to Stephanie Duggan, who manages that today, because I got a request about it. And, you know, I think she made a good point that like we really just wouldn't have a way to manage crowds, you know, and people kind of get grouped together. And so I just, it just didn't feel like the right time to do it.
What a like unduly. My insurance, our insurance provider would have a field day, found out that we were inviting people to walk around town.
All right. Thank you.
To clarify, sorry, what it says for moderate risk activities, participating in one-way trick or treating where individually wrapped goodie bags are lined up for families to grab and go while continuing to social distance. Such as the end of the driveway or edge of the yard. So, you know, if you're preparing them, wash your hands and that kind of thing. So like, that's a way to do it. That's a little bit more moderate.
Okay.
All right. Anyone else, anything else on Halloween at this point? Okay. We have the state reopening plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. So, Madam Chairman, there's, the governor has announced we're now into phase three, step two. You know, there's a lot to that. So I encourage the public to read the governor's orders and whatnot, just to kind of have a better sense of it. And we've been passing those orders along. Becky has been passing those along to the license holders and businesses and want to just make sure everyone's aware of it. But something separately, just want to get a feel for the board, how you feel about this. Don't have the answer today. So one, one proposal was to consider a, just to sort of like, we try to be sensitive to some of the businesses and particularly the license holders. You know, in the revenue stream or their projected revenues and whatnot, just to see how the board feels about potentially splitting up the payments that are due for those various licenses, right? So if a certain amount of payment is due by the end of the year, how would the board feel about delaying a portion of that? And there's pros and cons to it. Like the pro is that the businesses may appreciate a sort of. Extension, so to speak, on their, on their application. The con is that, that, you know, like, I don't have a lot of leverage over, if they don't pay it in time, like we'd still give them the license so they'd still be able to act. You know, on behalf of having the license, but they would still owe us the rest of the money. So. That's just one. I'm just throwing it out there just for the board to feel about it. If you, if it's a, if it's a, if it's a non-starter, so be it. If you have questions, great.
If it's, if it's something that we did decide to do. When would the second, if we split it or delayed it or whatever, when would it have to be paid where it wouldn't affect our local receipts for next year?
All right. So we, so we've already projected our local receipts for next year. So they, so we, we kind of have an ongoing amount of cash at all times. So, so that it's, it's kind of like two different topics. As long as we get the cash in time to start making our payments due July 1st of the new fiscal year, which in general we do. So, and this, this wouldn't be enough to make a dent in the sort of like payments that are due that first week of the fiscal year. But, but, so I would say, but you're absolutely right. We can't just say, like, we shouldn't just say June period. That would cause my next town accountant a heart attack. So I would, I would probably say. Probably middle of May. Becky, what do you think? Middle of May?
The second payment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was thinking more April to give them a four-month lag.
Okay.
But May's fine too, because then you're starting to get a little bit warmer and maybe a lot more people are heading downtown. Maybe COVID's. You know, getting behind us.
What, and Greg, I mean, you do bring up a good point, even though, you know, I would, I would hope that, you know, if the business, if we are doing this for the businesses, then the businesses will. You know, will also reciprocate by paying us, you know, when, when it's due. But is there any kind of repercussion or, or something we can do to ensure that they will pay in May?
Yes. Greg and I talked about that. And if they're late, we can make a payment, a late payment. I mean, I know I have apartments and I give each one of my tenants the option. If you're late, what, what would you like the late fee to be? And they picked, and my tenants, all of them have picked a different late fee. So we could, or the board could make the late fee. Greg had suggested a hundred dollar late fee if they're late, if they miss that date.
So what, we don't want to have to do, we don't, right? We don't want to like, the point is, the point of this exercise would be to give them leniency, so to speak.
Right.
I, we don't want to have to like. Make them pay more, but.
Right. We're not trying to make money on the deal. We're trying to help them, but ensure that they pay also. Right.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't a late fee be commensurate with the amount of the fee that they have to begin with? I mean, looking at this list. An $80 automatic amusement license, $80 to pay in full, but a hundred dollars if you're late. And then you got $4,270 for an alcohol license and they're only paying a hundred bucks for a late fee. That doesn't seem.
Fair point. We could do.
It should be proportionate.
Proportion. So we can say 10%, we can say 10% of the, of the, of the full license.
There you go.
What, what's the late fee if they don't pay with the current deadline?
They don't get their license.
Uh huh. And why isn't that our option?
Could be.
Because we want them to operate.
Yeah.
And for the next, it would be for the next year, presumably, if they would.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I got it.
We're trying, we're trying to help them out. Basically, that's what the soul is helping hand.
You know, this might be a viewpoint. I mean, like if.
It might be gone.
If they don't pay by April or May or whatever, can't we just condition the revoking of that year's license?
Can we do that, Becky? Can we revoke license?
What we'd have to do is we'd have to work with legal, send them a notification. And then at renewal time, it would be your choice to not renew their license.
No, I'm saying it gets renewed automatically at the new year, right?
It doesn't, if we don't get, currently, if we don't get the payment by December 31st. They have to reapply. The alcohol licenses definitely have to reapply for a brand new license.
So there any way, just thinking out of the box, and this may not make any sense at all, but you make the, the. The incentive to pay. So you say 10% off if you pay it on time. Otherwise, you get. You know, you have to.
10% penalty?
Add a 10% penalty on top if you're late.
That's, that's a good point. And I appreciate you thinking outside the box. I would discourage that only because I'm, I still need to have that.
Need the money.
Like we, and we set the permits, which need to be updated frankly, but we set the permits to be able to cover the costs.
Right.
Whatever capacity we can of issuing the permit. So like, because you know, that, that, that cash goes into the bucket that pays for new inspections. Becky's time, you know, like it all. Yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we consider this and then reconsider it next in, on the 20th? Does that make sense?
Perfect.
Yeah.
We can come back and do that?
Yeah. If you guys have questions in the meantime, shoot, shoot me or Becky a line.
Okay. Um, the other question I wanted to ask was probably for Megan. It was more Board of Health related again. But I was wondering if they had weighed in a little bit more about the masks and their concern or how they felt about mask wearing around town, et cetera.
Yes, they did. And they had a couple of recommendations which have been implementing. One was to, hold up the minutes here. They recommended that we do kind of targeted outreach to specific community groups. So the ones that they kind of highlighted were senior population and student population. So I did reach out to Amy for her newsletter for the Council on Aging. And, you know, we'll kind of put something in there for the next one. She's also been doing a really good job about promoting mask wearing in her publications. Then I reached out to the Superintendent's Office. To get the school population and, you know, they have a lot of protocols in place and kind of advertising channels that they've been doing. So those ones are kind of on the easier side. I've also been trying to step up our mask-wearing graphics on our social media. I try to post every week to remind people and like get that shared. And one, one task that is still outstanding that was requested that staff do, that I, that I plan to do is to encourage mask wearing on the rail trail. Because that's kind of a place that it isn't getting as much attention. So I have, we're going to go and put them in the kiosks. You know, like a big wear a mask graphic and reminder. That, that's still on my list to do. But they, they agree. They really want to try to promote it as much as we can. And those were kind of the direct, the directions that I got from. Um, and those were kind of the, the direct, the directions that, that I got from the board um, for implementation.
Is that, do you know if the um, and it's probably really bad if it is, because it means I'm not reading it. Um, the electronic sign downtown, are we, did we put the mask, please wear a mask on that again, or?
I think we, I, I know we touched base with um, chief about that, but I, I'm not positive it's up, so I'll double check with them.
No, it's just the fifteen miles per hour right now is slow. That's. The one downtown we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you might be able to do that, like fifteen miles per hour outdoor dining.
Yeah, I think there was a problem with changing it. It's an old, it's an older sign and I think we had a problem like changing it from the office. And so I, I think it just didn't get, didn't get accomplished, but yeah, um, I, yeah, I'll definitely follow up on that and make sure.
And won't they be using that shortly for election issues?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we'll have to see what we can do about it.
Cause I, I think they're going to use sign language, David.
If, if anyone doesn't know where, uh, that there's an election coming. No, I'm just teasing, but well, um, yeah, we, we, you know, that's a good point, David. Like we kind of have to like, we only have one sign, so we gotta have to figure out where we're gonna.
I just applied for a grant for a second sign and I didn't get it.
Oh, you didn't get it?
No, it is on our radar. We want to get more. Um, but maybe.
Try it again, try again.
Yeah, yeah, we keep trying.
All right. Anyone else have anything on that, that topic? All right. Uh, then we'll move on to the extension of the outdoor table service. Um, Greg, you want to go on this?
Just really quickly, but I mean, Megan, this is, this is Megan's baby. So no, it's not Megan's baby is.
It's coming.
So close, so close.
So many babies.
No, so um, uh, so the governor did, did, is allowing local licensing authorities. So the board is likely to, to, to extend um, the outdoor seating, which is up to and until sixty days past the, the end of the emergency, the state of emergency. So that's, that's not insignificant. So like that, that could be, that could be a long time. So Megan, I don't know if you can clarify further, but for the most part, we just kind of throw it out there and see how the board feels about it.
Yeah. So I mean, it, it's been discussed at the Economic Development Committee, um, because you know, that was a group that helped put together um, the application form for our original outdoor dining proposal, extension of premises. And so, you know, there are things to consider when, you know, offering or considering an extension. So what I've done is I did work with Kate Federoff, um, Justin, Margot, um, to try to figure out the specific language that, you know, I can recommend to um, extend the program. And, and a lot of it's weather related, right? So um, you know, how, one of the things Kate recommended extension application is to ask um, what your snow removal plan is. Like how quickly can you get your, get your equipment off the street if we have, if you have. So I put together a pretty um, short but comprehensive extension request application. And you know, I was thinking, I don't have it in front of, I don't have it for you today to review the actual extension. But I mean, it was vetted, it was vetted internally. But if you're okay, I just wanted to just check if you're even okay with the idea of extending it. Um, because I wouldn't want to share it with businesses if, if that was not something you were interested in. So I was kind of like trying to do the work, but not go as far as to presume that this is something that the board wanted to do. But I, you know, the deadline right now is November one. So uh, if the board was interested in considering extensions and they can be, you know, considered one by one. Um, if the businesses are interested, then I could send these, these, this application to extend out to the businesses. And you know, get them all in for your next meeting, if, if that was the path you chose.
Okay. Um, the one, one of the quick questions I have is um, actually probably for Becky as far as um, because it's the ABCC. Do we have to do anything additional as far as because we've approved it or that?
I'll have to, I'll have to send in the brand new applications with the extensions. Information has to go in. So as, you know, as they get done and completed, I need to have the files and records. And I have to change the actual license uh, to show the extension. So whatever on the wall has to come down, the new one goes up, but the original one has to stay someplace handy. Because once the um, you know, state of emergency goes away, then the real license, the original license goes back into effect.
So how do we give an expiration date on this if we don't know? I, I would love to know the end of the state of emergency. I mean, that would be phenomenal. Do we know that yet?
No.
What Somerville just did, they've, it extended it through twenty twenty one.
Through January of twenty twenty one or, or through the end of twenty twenty one?
The end of twenty twenty one. So it's your, that's your call.
Wow.
You are the local licensing authority. You have, you know, you're equal to the board, you know, the ABCC when it comes to that. So that's your leverage.
Yeah, yeah. But I would just match whatever that says in the, in the order. So the order says, and again, I should read.
It's sixty days. So I, yeah, I would recommend doing sixty days past November first, which puts it to the end of the year. And then I, I would imagine we wouldn't need an extension. I mean, I don't know how mild the winter will be. But if there was a business that was interested in continuing through the month of January, you know, that you could consider it at that time. So I'd, I'd probably piecemeal it if, um, if that'd be my right.
I mean, God willing, we, we get past this sooner, but maybe not. But like, hopefully we don't have to have it all through the twenty twenty one. But, but some cities, you know, have, have a strong mayor and they don't mind kind of contending with the governor's office. I recommend against that. So I, I think just sticking to the, sticking to what the governor's office says.
Okay.
I only, my only comment would be um, whatever we choose to do, just make sure that the police, the fire, um, the DPW are all on board with whatever the snow removal process would be. Um, you know, I personally hate the cold weather, so I would never see myself sitting outside in, you know, potentially twenty degree weather with uh, wind blowing and everything else.
But they're gonna, they're gonna be, uh, PC is going to be building an igloo.
But well, that gets us sort of to my point, because I hear these stories about some businesses are buying these heaters, these outdoor heaters. But if they put them out there, won't there, won't that be an impediment to the sidewalk for people who want to be out walking? Or if they put them in the street, how are they going to remove them for snow removal? So.
GGs?
I haven't.
Yeah, yeah. They have three down there right now and they're really nice looking. And I know another restaurant over in Framingham has them.
Where are they? Where, where do they put them?
GGs?
Yeah.
They're um, right at the um, brown uh, little mini fencing that they put in. And they're, you know, screwed in to the fencing.
Yeah. So it doesn't block the sidewalk or anything like that.
But your point is well taken, David. And, and I believe Megan, well, I mean, we, we would definitely, as per, as we, as we usually do, we usually have the departments kind of weigh in on any license. Specifically, Megan, do we have something like a checkbox for, or I know, I know Justin has already told us like his sort of like vision for wintertime.
Yeah, I, I have a draft and I think I just want to see where we were with this, with this body before. But yeah, I will of course, um, share with, with police and fire. And to address the heat, heat lamp um, question, you know, that, that had come up um, the past week or so. And I did speak with our plumbing and gas inspector who, and our fire chief about it. Because um, a lot of them are the temporary gas fire uh, or heat lamps. And um, those are, we're happy, those are fine to have. They're, you know, permissible as long as um, people have fire extinguishers nearby. And I do have that listed in this extension request. Like do, are you planning to have this? Yes or no? Just so we can kind of keep tabs on it.
Is there an inspection required for those? Like a gas inspection? No?
No. As long as people aren't running, I mean, the portable ones that are on patios are, are, are more comfortable with. Um, we're not comfortable with any type of running of gas lines.
Yeah. You talk about using propane, basically.
Yeah, yeah. If you have a portable, you know, kind of patio propane heater.
Yeah.
And you have an extinguisher nearby, um, that has been approved, that we're comfortable with that from.
So my feeling is if, as long as there are safety protocols and that it can be removed for snow removal, I have no issues. If the business wants to try to make go at it, which I wish them well, uh, and keep business open for the wintertime, so be it, as long as we have that safety protocol.
I agree.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
So Megan will work on it and we'll get you something.
Yeah. So I think what, what I'll do at the next meeting, you know, which will be the twentieth, is try to have and have um, these extensions in your, in your packet for your review um, at the twentieth. If that, if that sounds okay to you, because then, you know, and I don't know how many will continue past November first, but at least we are giving them the opportunity. You know, you're giving them the opportunity to, to do it. So, um, but of course, if you have any questions and, you know, concerns, you do not have to extend it and it would end on November first. So um, I'll work on that. So we have that for the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Sounds great. Thank you. Thank you, Becky. Uh, all right. Then let's move on to, I'll entertain a motion regarding cemetery deeds.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we move to approve the, or I will move to approve the three cemetery deeds, deed thirty three, deed twenty sixty seven, and deed twenty sixty eight, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Armand and Chris, tie. All right. Any questions?
Any reason why, any reason why this wasn't included in the regular consent agenda? Aren't we, don't we usually put cemetery deeds in the consent?
No, I think normally.
We do.
Do we?
We need to do correspondence or consent.
It wouldn't be correspondence, I thought.
But because these have to go to the town clerk, you know, there's some more levels that have to go with it. I, Greg and I put them in separately.
That's okay.
When in doubt, we put them in their own separate thing. But I, I guess that's okay.
All right. Uh, so all in favor? David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am yes. So thank you very much. Uh, recap of special town meeting. Chris, you missed it. Do you need the whole recap?
I've been recapped. I spoke to Greg.
All right. Mr. Johnson?
So I, I think it was a very successful meeting, like in, in all aspects, but particularly about the execution. I mean, the, the, the planning relatively straightforward because, because we, we tried to make the magic, which I feel we did, but someone must have been sacrificing something to the powers that be for blessings with nice weather again.
Yeah.
Um, and it all worked out beautifully. Now, if we end up having to do this again, which as we just got done talking about, who knows how long this, this whole pandemic is going to last. Uh, if we, if we get three for three for beautiful weather, I'll be thrilled. But you know, like, um, I think, I think the odds are going to be against us. But anyways, um, it was great. And I just wanted to give an opportunity for the board, you know, and I asked Madam Chair, if, if, uh, how, you know, like just to kind of put this on the agenda. We're gonna, we're gonna try to schedule a follow up amongst like the working group of us with Dick Downey, the town moderator. But I can't imagine there's a lot of tweaking, like we're, we're, we're pretty good. And I, and I didn't see anything outstanding as far as the execution of it. Uh, that, that needs to be addressed, you know, the logistics and operations and otherwise. But I'm absolutely open to the recommendations and, and advice from the board. And, and if you, if you want Madam Chair, one, you can talk about the content of the, the meeting itself, but.
Yep. Well, actually, and the only thing I actually about the content of the meeting, um, obviously the, the, the biggest thing that people were talking about, obviously, was the bylaw and, and as, as Donna referenced earlier today. Um, and, and it is, so I'm wondering if there's a way. I know that once you open something to vote on, I think once you open something to vote on it, you're voting on the entire language all. Even though we were only changing either a number or a, a, you know, a, a fine, everything in that bylaw is now up to interpretation, um, which then opens it up for everybody to um, consider. Maybe I don't like this line or why are we choosing this or whatever? I did agree with David's statement the day of the meeting of, you know, I'm not comfortable changing something on the floor when it hasn't been vetted. Um, I, I absolutely think the bylaw committee, I think it would be great, you know, for, and I, I believe that, you know, we might reach out to a couple of people to, you know, tap them to, to be involved in the bylaw committee, um, so they, they can bring their ideas forward or make it easier for them to bring those ideas forward before we're at town meeting on the floor. Um, but I just don't know how else that could go, or if there's a better way to explain the purpose, or if it's just, you just, it's just where we're at.
I think one thing that would help a lot in this situation is if we printed the original bylaw, so it was much more clear on what is the change. As opposed to, a lot of people thought it was, couldn't tell what was the original bylaw and then it was a small change. But now they're actually arguing against the original bylaw. So it's still there. So I think if you had the text, the original bylaw and then clearly showed what the change was, I think that would um, help guide a lot of the conversation and some of the misunderstandings that we saw on Saturday.
I think there's also an opportunity where um, in the process itself, it seems to me that if, when we're saying, okay, we're going to vote on a, on a group, if somebody has an intent in the audience to offer an amendment, that should immediately be withdrawn from the, from that grouping. Because otherwise it confuses everything. And then suddenly you're voting on something that's not in the original grouping. And it's, it's really different. So my thought was more so for when we're um, when, when you're debriefing with the, uh, the moderator, that perhaps in the future, hopefully we never have to have another outdoor meeting. But in the future, if we do, that um, the grouping, if the issue be, does anybody have any issues that they have with any one of these things that they intend to make a motion to amend? If they do, it gets withdrawn from that grouping and is handled completely separately. Because another part of the confusion, I think, was once he even got past that, then nobody knew what was included, what isn't included, where are we, what's going on? And it got very confusing.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. Uh, other than that, I mean, I did, I, I have to, I was going to put it in my chair report, but I'll say it now. I have to thank, I mean, I, I thank everybody and I'll thank people later in the chair report. Um, but a special thank goes out to Kyle Brainerd. I mean, I, he was there in the morning. He was there, you know, all day. He was there at the Beijing Royal School that night. He really was a superstar that day and, and I really, really appreciate all of his work. Um, and he was cheerful the entire time. It was amazing. So um, but I don't think we could have pulled this off without the, the town staff that we had. And that, that really all worked together and all pulled together. Um, obviously Becky, Greg, Megan, Justin, um, Michelle, all the election workers. Um, you know, everybody kind of knew what they were doing and, and Dick, obviously. Um, and it, it just, the execution of the actual town meeting, I would say, went off pretty, almost flawlessly. Anyone else?
You said it all. I just, and I think that Justin obviously did a great job of coordinating all, all the uh, boy scouts to make sure they, they get, they get the way they were supposed to get the microphones in.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think if we ever have to do it again, we'll use like signal flags.
Yeah.
Get them over here.
And I think it was a good change from, because initially when I looked at the pink card, I said, why, why just one card? What happened to the yes and no? So then uh, I, I, I heard the explanation. I think that was really good. Made it easier.
Yeah.
I think everything went quite smoothly, just like it did the first time. So hats off.
Yeah, yeah.
Fantastic. All right.
Um, real quick, do we know if the bylaw committee is following up with, I believe, Glenn or Donna or?
Yes, they are following Glenn, I believe.
Yeah, they, they, uh, Bill Coleman, the chair of the bylaw, you know, um, he, he, he beat me to it. I was gonna go, I was gonna go recruit Glenn for the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, he's joining the group, yeah.
But Bill, Bill already went over there. I don't know if he's gonna join. I don't know.
No, he will. He will. He sat next to me in the car at the movies ironically, and we were talking about that. He's gonna get involved. He's gonna get involved.
Yeah, because I think that speaks to what Justine was saying too, and all of you, like, the idea is to, I mean, yes, they're public meetings and whatnot, but it's hard for people to understand what's going to be on all the bylaw review committee meetings. But you know, to, to kind of reach out to those specific people who you know are going to be interested and, and have like a yeah, that's how committee work is done. You need to get expertise. At the federal level, they're called lobbyists. Around here, they're just called friendly neighbors.
And, and he's perfect. He's got an English, he's an English major. He's a, he writer. So that's a, it's a good fit. We, we had a nice conversation.
I think he was involved, I spoke to him after the town meeting. He was involved in Arlington, I think he said.
Yes, that's where he is.
Bylaw committee.
Yep.
Excellent. All right. Uh, then I will. move along to item number 16, the warrant for the 2020 state election. So I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the warrant for the 2020 state election as shown, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Jeff, for the second. Anyone have any questions? And we've done this before. We're just going to.
Procedural, yep.
Yeah.
One, one quick question. The last time we voted, two of the precincts were actually in the Fowler Gym. I don't know if it makes any difference, but this warrant that we're approving says that everything is in the Fowler Auditorium.
It is in the auditorium.
Yeah, but they, but you're right, David, that we shifted them over. So let me.
They had two precincts in the gym and two precincts in the auditorium.
Let me, I, I think it's okay, because I think that was a game day decision, but let me, let me, I'll follow up to make sure it's okay. I have a certain amount of confidence that this is probably good to go. I would still recommend that the board approve this, and I'll find out if if that's not the case.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. All in favor? David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So thank you very much. Next, we are going to receive an update regarding the town clerk. Greg?
Madam Chairman, yes. So the our our town clerk, Michelle Jenkins, has submitted her resignation, her last day is Thursday. And we wish her well. Congratulations on, well, I understand as a as a job opportunity, so on and so forth. It sounds like it's good for her and her family. Okay, so, but we need a town clerk, or at least someone in the in capacity to help see us through the election. So the one that y'all just approved the warrant for. So we put out an advertisement onto the Town Clerk Association for Massachusetts. I notified as many people under the sun as I could find, notified the Elections Division for the Secretary of State's office. Anyways, just put out our feelers as far as we possibly could, and we didn't get any bites for the interim town clerk. So we, you know, you know, in the past, we had Jimmy Mullin, y'all remember Jimmy? And and he came and filled in for us between Michelle Sacklaski and Michelle Jenkins. But we we weren't so lucky this time. So, but we got creative and we we I I am recommending the appointment of Joanna Bilada Simeone, which I don't think I've ever said her last name aloud before, so I don't know if that's right. But she is the Administrative Assistant for for Office of Municipal Services, so she reports to Megan right now. And has a pretty strong background, although admittedly, she has never worked in a town clerk's office. My understanding is that she is, she does have experience as an elections worker in the town of Lunenburg. And I think she saw the call this evening, so we can ask for clarification on these, on these, on this resume. But she, she accepted the offer to to be, serve in the capacity of town clerk, in so much as seen through the election. So the this election is much more complicated than, and as far, I bet the voters can even tell, like, this is no ordinary election. You know, the news being aside, I mean, like, just all the protocols that go into early voting, registration to voting, and whatnot, there's, there's much more to this election than there has been in the past. And a certain amount of election fatigue, not only on on the voters themselves, but certainly on the election workers. So this is, this is no small undertaking. And so if I'm, I'm really grateful that Joanna was, I hope she knew what she was getting into when she said she would be willing to take this on. But but it would, it's a huge help to have like a a single entity to sort of keep, keep a track of all the things that has to happen for this, for this election. But so my recommendation to the board of cycling would be to appoint her as the temporary town clerk, effective Friday, because that would be the day after Michelle Jenkins leaves. But without a end date, because I ideally, I would want Joanna to to see it through, so to speak, to not only the election, which is November 3rd, but also whatever follow up, you know, obviously, there's reporting that has to happen to to the powers that be, and I don't know how long that takes, right? So I would want to make sure that Joanna is empowered enough to see that through. So that's, that's my recommendation to the board. I I typed up the recommended motion, the executive content. But you, if you want, you can have Joanna introduce herself if y'all don't know her.
Yes, Joanna, could you, could you introduce yourself? And also, let's get the correct pronunciation of your last name. That way we can say it properly.
Thank you. It's Joanna Bilada Simeoni, but I I go by Joanna Bilada because it's too long to type email with Bilada Simeoni. So I do just go by Joanna Bilada at work for email purposes. I'm very excited for the opportunity. I have been, I was a call center manager for Verizon, retired 25 years with an early management package. And I've been working in a school system municipal setting since then. And I joined, I was lucky enough to get the job opportunity in Maynard with the Office of Municipal Services in February. And I've really had my heart set on a clerk or collector position within a municipality. So I'm very excited at the opportunity to try to show my strengths and have a successful 2020 presidential election.
Excellent. That sounds great. It sounds like you, so you've been an election worker before, so. And you've obviously been present in town hall when, you know, we've had the, were you, were you in the office when they were doing early elections this last for the primary? Or were, did you opt to work from home?
We we opt from to work from home because the whole setup was right out the door of the municipal services. So to have people crossing and whatnot, they recommended we work at home for that week. But I saw the setup, because Kyle, as as you all commented on, is fabulous, and he's always getting everything ready, as he's doing now for the 14 days. This year, we're doing early voting for 14 days, starting on October 17 through the 24th, Saturday and Sundays. So we'll be working that, and Kyle's already getting downstairs ready. Unfortunately enough, because Michelle is here till Thursday, so I spent time with her today. Time, I'll be with her tomorrow as well. And as Greg said, we've emailed, I've talked to the state election boards already, the Massachusetts Clerk Association, they've sent me numerous things. They're getting my state passwords, and so we're, we're really moving quickly to make sure we're, we're ready to go.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions? Any other questions for Joanna?
Can I, can I add something, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
And of course, there's questions, but I just want to also, right, so just to be clear that, like, I'm asking the board to empower her as the town clerk so that she can do the elections. But, you know, like, the town clerk's office is only two people, so it's only, it's only the town clerk and the niece of the town clerk Karen Fay is the town clerk. And Karen's only been with us for six or seven months, so.
February, yeah.
Yeah, February. So I just ask her the public's patience when it comes to working with the town clerk's office. Like, we we get back to you as soon as we can. But, but, you know, the elections is priority, and and then, and then Karen is gonna try to handle as much as she can, and she knows how to do, and then we'll get through it. I just want to make it clear that.
And I think that I I do think that, you know, right now, we are in the, we are still in COVID, and, you know, as far as the offices, they are, you know, sporadic, not sporadically staffed, but they're busy doing other things. So I do think that it is, sometimes it's gonna happen that something's gonna go to voicemail. But I think as long as we try to get back in a, you know, within a day, I I don't think that that's a, I don't think that's a bad thing personally, right now, in what we're doing. You know, and and I think that obviously, we can put on the website that that we're overwhelmed, not not in a bad way, but just because if you talk to any town clerk right now, that's pretty much the message, is that there is a lot of work going on. And and I I think I had mentioned to Greg that I'm friendly with with the town clerk, who was mentioning the fact that because they sent out the second round of ballot applications after they sent the first rounds, where you could sign up for all of the elections. Well, now people aren't sure if they signed up, so now they're signing up a second time or a third time, so you're getting duplicates of that. Plus, people are also calling to find out when their ballot, where their ballots are, which the towns only just recently, did we even get our ballots yet, or we just?
Just today.
So, so I do think that 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 we do somehow need to get the word out to our residents that, you know, absolutely, you can check, but there's also Track My Ballot and 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 things like that. But we do have people in the office. It just may take a little bit more time.
And and we pulled the report today, and we received so far over 3,100 requests for mail-in ballots. So those all have to be, the ballot that we just got today have to be put in the envelope, stamped, mailed. So and and they have till the 24th to send those in, so they'll still be coming in, but we're at a little over 3,100 right now.
Wow, yeah. And you have election workers or some workers that are helping you with that?
Yes, they're coming in. Actually, I think they're starting tomorrow to start filling the envelopes.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Sounds like you already jumped in.
Yeah, I'm trying. I'm trying.
That's great.
Thank you. I'm very excited, very, very excited. And I enjoy, the leadership is is phenomenal at town hall. We're very fortunate. Becky has has stopped and talked to me at least three or four times each day. Megan and Greg, their leadership, they're just very supportive, very kind. It's a wonderful place to work. It truly is.
Anyone else have anything? Any questions? All right. Well, then I guess I will entertain a motion. Yes, sir, executive content, sir.
I want to do executive content.
I'll move to approve and appoint Joanna Bilada Simeoni as temporary town clerk, effective October 9, 2020. I hope we got that right.
You did. Great job.
I second that.
All right, thank you, Armand. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So good luck, Joanna.
Good luck, Joanna.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 18, which is our, the Board of Selectmen goals. Greg, would you like to speak to our goals?
So what I, is I drafted the goals based on the conversation that we had on September 12. And so this is just, this is just the first step, you know, like, if if you guys want to have any revisions to it, absolutely. But, you know, you can see, this is the, those top six goals are kind of like a compilation of the various notes that I took, and then Megan took, and then we talked about them together, and then did what I said I would do, which is kind of, you know, sort of like crank out some goals for you guys. And so there you go. You can.
Well, to um, to to that point, where do we go from here? I mean, these are great. How do we start implementing some of these goals? Especially, my concern still is the master plan that has to, we have to have some kind of a timeline when we're gonna get this implementation team going. That's just my take. And then the other thing is the town charter. That's something that has to process, has to start there somehow. I don't know when that happens and how that happens. And then the the board policies, that's something that we need to to review and update, or, you know, those are just some of the things that that are are just to a degree glaring right now, but the master plan should be one of our priorities. And making sure we have a timeline when we're gonna start, you know, putting a team together and implementing.
So I can, I can speak to that, but I would also recommend that the board approve the goals. So if if you like the goals as they are, which it sounds like
Okay.
favorable to those, to those particular goals.
Especially since we came up with it.
Yeah, no, I, no, I'm on it. I mean, like, I'm gonna be doing work on behalf of the board and on towards these goals.
Yeah.
So I I will be, if as, there's already work on those in those regards, right? So but I can, I can sort of draft a proposal on how we will continue for for those goals.
I like that, yeah.
First things first, I mean, like, if you like these goals, you approve these goals, but if you want, if you want any revisions.
I I feel that it would be nice if we had more specificity in the language of some of the goals. I like the goals, the content, but, you know, what it so I think with number two, for instance, I think we said we wanted to meet specifically with at least the chairs of each of the major committees, maybe major being defined by how many items they have in the master plan underneath them. And let's see, what else do I have here? Yeah, for number four, I think the reaffirm the board's responsibilities of appointing a 42 formalized review, just what 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 do we mean by that? I just, some more specificity. I know we talked about having a resume and a cover letter for each each applicant, so is that what we meant? What are the, or is it just defining that is the goal? So.
Can I speak for a minute? So you're absolutely right. So so if you're going with the smart goals approach, then they should be realistic, and and a certain amount of specificity is absolutely key, because you want to be able to have measurable goals, right? That's the end. And you can measure that by saying like, yep, we created this, and then and then that did that. But but, so I I I have the general philosophy for the for the for the relationship of the Board of Selectmen and my office and so on and and that the Board of Selectmen are the executive. So they, so you provide the direction, the policies, and then I provide the administrative functions. So so some of what you're getting, and you, we can disagree about this, but I'm, I'm just telling you my perspective. The, some of what you're getting at is some of the administrative functions, like create a form, create a pre-application. Like, that, that's a goal that I will do in accomplishment of your goal. Your goal is to, is to, you know, be successful as the appointing authority and, well, you know, like, you know, I know it sounds like it's, it's broad, but to do that, we can then say, we did that by creating a goal, by creating an application, by creating that's the measurement part, and that's what I can show you that I did to accomplish that goal. So, I mean, you can get to whatever level of specificity you want. I'm just saying that, like, I, you're, you're giving a policy direction.
All right, that's a, that's a fair point. I, there is one goal that I would like to see is that on last year's goal, we had negotiate the lease with ArtSpace, and I
Yeah.
done mainly because of the pandemic, which is completely understandable, but let's just get it right back on there and then knock it out.
Okay, no problem. You know, coincidentally, I I I I've already started that background work. So like, I've already, you know, talking with Justin, shot an email over to Lisa Mead to try to get that that going. And he's already been talking with Tim Pettis and and Jerry, so yes, that is happening, but.
To to a degree, to Jeff's point, I think what we should be thinking about is short term, midterm, long term. So we see, okay, what, some of these goals could be done in the short term and and kind of prioritize them too, I think, to be good to to do that. And I think it's up to us to be able to, you know, enhance the language of what we're trying to accomplish with each one of those goals. So is is that something that we need to have further discussions, are some of our future meetings? Or do we, you know, because we did say that these are what we came up with in six months from now, we're gonna be doing a, you know, a check in. But I think we should be spending a little bit more time on developing these goals, to Jeff's point.
So if we wanted, if we want to put it back, put it on, we just keep putting things on October 20th meeting, but that's totally fine. And if we want to take a couple of weeks and everyone want to really kind of look at, look at what is here and what their ideas of how they, or what they envision would be the way to those goals, if they have opinions on that, and they can be prepared, and then.
I mean, it's up to everybody else. I'm, I'm just making a suggestion.
Right, but I'm just, I'm thinking that if 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 there's, if you have an idea of how to create, how to enhance the public res, public outreach for the Board of Selectmen, et cetera, et cetera, and how that can be accomplished, then that would be something, you know, we can come back in in two weeks and say, all right, you know, I was looking at these, you know, I think these six goals probably, and with the addition of the ArtSpace lease, they sound like, I mean, they sound like a good jumping off point for what our town needs to, or what our town should be accomplishing, and what the board should be accomplishing. And I guess that's the question, is do we agree that this is a good jumping off point? And then we can codify it maybe next meeting with other ideas of how we feel that that can get accomplished. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So then, everybody has homework.
Don't we always?
And we can, and we.
So are we approving these now and discussing the details next time, or are we, what is that?
There's no real action, right? There's no action listed, and I could entertain a motion too. But if you want, we can just do that next, next time.
All right.
But that way, we just know what we're working off of, so it's gonna be those. But that way, we just know what we're working off of. So it's gonna be those seven goals. All right. Moving on. Greg, Town Administrator Report, at Al.
That's me, that's me. So it's late, so I'll just go kind of quickly. And I, and everything, I, I think everything I'm about to say is in the Town Administrator Report. So as always, I recommend the public look at the Town Ministerial Report and and, you know, as if, if nothing else, just as I want to appreciate all the work that all the departments put into it. Couple of things I want to highlight really quick. So Crosstown Connect is being considered for renegotiation for its intermunicipal agreement. So the intermunicipal agreement for Crosstown Connect, which is our public transportation regional partnership. Primarily in in the town of Maynard, you see it through dispatch services provided for the Council on Nation Ban. So, you know, we have agreements with with the LRTA, the Little Regional Transport Authority, that gives us the van and resources for, you know, Mark Koenig, who drives the van and does like the commuter shuttle ride, well, used to, I mean, not as popular nowadays, but to do the commuter shuttle ride. But a little separate from that is that, is the Crosstown collaboration that we have. I'm going further into it than I wanted to, but what I want to say is that it's actually at a loss. Crosstown Connect is running, the program itself is running at a loss. And so the town of Acton, who's the, who's one of, they're the biggest sort of player in this regional collaboration. They, they proposed to reevaluate the the program and not necessarily to say like, we want to get rid of dispatch services or or the shuttle services, absolutely not. But to sort of like reassess what the program is and this, and the sort of scope to try to make it fit, try to try to be a better fit. I mean, like, it's not that surprising. No program stays exactly how it's gonna stay forever, so sometimes you have to adjust.
Is it running at a, at a loss because of COVID? Or is it running at a loss under normal circumstances? Like, was it six months ago running at a loss?
No, no, it, uh, six months ago was starting to run at a loss, but it it got compounded. So one of the, they lost a grant, if I recall correctly, they lost a grant, which was not insignificant. But they do have an earmark, which Representative Kate Hogan makes sure is in the bill every, every time. So but I, if I recall, we were, we were reliant on this other grant that I don't think was and I don't remember that the agency, it might have been Mast dot, but but otherwise, the, 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 the needs of the program are supposed to be met primarily through, I mean, ideally, you have it be self-sustaining, right? So not reliant on grants, not reliant on earmarks and whatnot. But that would require a certain amount of participation. And so when individual companies or towns pay in, then, then it's supposed to offset the cost. But I don't think there's enough buy-in, like frankly, I don't just don't think there's enough companies signing on.
Greg, to do, to, to this topic, isn't it true that from what I'm, I'm hearing is that The View and Camila Gardens are requesting I guess, more service in regards to Crosstown?
Yeah. No, and that's great. And I, and I, and I hope we, we can sort of accommodate that, because I think in effect, it's one of their, like, it's on the brochure, I believe. So but, but Crosstown Connect is regional, so like, the demands are sort of like across multiple towns. And so that so it, it's complicated. I'm, I'm trying not to, like, it's, it's more complicated than it, than we would prefer. And so much so that it's
All right, yeah, I, I think it's, it probably impacts Maynard and our economic development desires more than it does the other communities. You know, Acton being right in town with the, with, with the, the commuter rail, where we have to hopefully provide transport for somebody who wants to use the commuter rail. And for us, with the amount of people that we have that want to reverse commute out from Cambridge to a high-tech firm here in Maynard. It's significantly important. I'd like to see what we can do to try to, to bolster it. And I think, I think it goes well beyond tonight's meeting and into a conversation with Kate as to what strategically we can do at the state level. But that's a conversation that I think we should have with her sooner rather than later.
That's already, that is occurring, and I, and I agree. And Kate's fully on board, like.
Yeah, I know she is.
She wants to expand more into Stowe.
Yes, I know.
And that's all good. In fact, that, that's a little holdup just on the private end, like, we're trying to, on that, on that end of literally that end of town and and that end of Stowe. So but yeah, no, I, I definitely don't want to lose
Yeah, we don't want to.
We, we enable sort of our, our economic development through, through access and sometimes we do, like transportation, then then we have to keep that up. So yeah, I, I'm clear. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to lose that, absolutely not. The other thing I want to I'm in talks with Town Council and about the golf course management. So, so Sterling Management, Sterling Golf Management had requested an extension for their contract, which Justin DiMarco and I have talked and we're generally agreeable to. But I, I wanted to get Town Council advice on it, and I, and I have a couple more questions for Town Council about that. But I just want to kind of keep the Board of Russ that, that their, their current extension ends at the end of this calendar year. And so they said, and they asked him for another extension. And then, and so when it comes to that, by the way, I will ask for some liaisons from the board if they're willing to help, like, help inform that negotiations to go into that. Similar with Art Space. So with Art Space, as I already said earlier, like, that, that, that is also coming due. So we want to be able to be beneficial to Art Space and have been, and, you know. So anyways, I'm, I'm just kind of informing the board that we'll be moving in that direction as well. And then remote learning enrichment program. So I don't know if this is very complicated, but basically the, the governor's office is trying to allow for non-daycares to provide daycare services. So like the Boys and Girls Club of Bassett Valley to, to allow for, actually, it's not daycare, so to speak, because it's actually like, school-aged children to use the, the Boys and Girls Club for their remote learning purposes. So to, to go there instead of school, i- if you're not, if you're in, if you're like, and if you're not going to the class, you can go to the Boys and Girls Club. But they need certification to be able to provide that. However, they, the Boys and Girls Club of Bassett Valley let us know recently that they have not yet gotten the interest. The applications to have enough pupils to offset the cost of running that program. So we were, we were scrambling to try to get them, the, you know, to be able to develop our application to give to the Board of Selectmen to, to act as that certifying authority. But the urgency is not there because they don't have the interest. Okay, and then and Columbus Day, Columbus Day is Monday, or Indigenous Peoples' Day, if and when it's changed, but holiday, it's a holiday on Monday.
Excellent. All right.
So I, I got a quick question, Greg, in regards to the Beijing Royal School. Any news? Or maybe Megan could kind of fill us in if there's anything going on there, because I haven't heard much of anything happen.
Megan, what have you heard recently?
Too much lately. I, I mean, I kind of reached out to them. They did support us when we were applying for a Mass Works grant for water infrastructure and the Powder Mill Corridor, and that was maybe a month ago. So we worked with them closely about some of their projections there, but I haven't heard too much of an update on on the project.
And then I saw, Greg, on your report that all the departments reported, but the police didn't report any. There, there was nothing there.
Oh, I, oh, wait, a timeout for submissions, like to the
Yeah, submissions, yeah.
So my policy is they have to, they have to provide the report once a month.
Oh, I got you.
I did want to comment that I'm loving the aerial picture of the new roof at Green Meadow School.
Yes, that was nice, the before and after.
Fantastic.
Pretty cool, actually. Yeah, that was Officer Peterson, I believe. Brian.
He's great. Anyone else have anything for Greg? All right. Then moving on to my report. The first thing, actually, I only have a couple of things, but the first thing is that go, going through, talking about the Board of Health and, and trying to have communication with the Board of Health, et cetera. I was wondering, that is one thing, or we, a number of people were wondering, it was one of those things that we do have that on a liaison list, but we, no one is assigned as a liaison to the Board of Health. And so we're one, I was wondering if that's something that someone would like to be. Or more than one person, you know, we can, we can figure out who really wants it. And that way, we can have a little bit more of communication, especially in times like these with the pandemic or whatever else happens to come up. Anyone have any thoughts?
Are they accepting a liaison?
Megan?
I think it's up to you. Yeah, I think they, they can be. But yeah, they meet the fourth Tuesday of the month at six thirty on Zoom.
And you, and I mean, and again, it's, it's a liaison position, so you don't necessarily have to be at every meeting. But, you know, again, it's someone who can reach out to either Megan or to the, the Chair of the Board or, or whatnot to try to, to to get more information.
I'll take it.
All right, Jeff? Everybody in favor of Jeff being liaison? Yes, you're in favor. Yes, you want it.
No, I'm in favor.
Volunteering, I'm in favor of that.
Favor.
All right, so Jeff, thank you. We appreciate that.
I think it's important.
Yes.
No, absolutely. I agree.
And you're the right guy for it.
All right. And the only other thing I have, again, we had some great events this past weekend. I already thanked most of the town staff. I was just so impressed with everybody. And, and then the Cespa Centennial Committee did their drive-in that night. Obviously, want to thank the, the FaZang Group, Beijing Royal School for, for hosting. And they all did a fantastic job. So also wanted to thank for the town meeting WAVM and the Boy Scouts, because they also did go above and beyond as far as that goes. I actually, my, my sister-in-law is in another town, and she said that she was listening to W U M B and all of a sudden it switched over to the Maynard Town Meeting. Got to hear it. But yeah, it was, it was very impressive, so.
And then at night, she could have listened to the movie.
Exactly, see? I know, but other than that, I think that's all I have for today. Armand?
Okay, I had a nice meeting with Greg. I did my one-on-one with him, just to kind of go over the review, and I think we had a nice conversation. I also attended, and Jeff and, and Justine were there too at the Aviva ribbon cutting. And I think that was nice to see another restaurant in town opened up. Good food, by the way. I tried it a few times already. We all knew about the fire that happened on Sunday the other day in downtown and glad to hear that it was minor damage in comparison to what it could have been. And it was nice to see that. I also attended a drive-in. It was a fabulous, fabulous experience. I think it's something that will stay with me for, for a long time. It was a nice experience and it was a great night. You couldn't have asked for better weather for that. And just so you people know, just, I'm sure you probably heard it, but the sanctuary is having some good use. I, I'm hearing that the raising of the funds is moving forward and looks like he might be close to getting the, the money that he needs in order for him to stay afloat. So it would be good to, to see that and that to happen. It would be good for the town, good for him. And anyway, but that's all I got. Oh, by the way, happy belated birthday, Justin.
Ah, thank you very much. Chris?
We're good.
Okay, sounds good. Jeff, do you have anything?
Armin pretty much said everything I was gonna say, so. I also, I had the opportunity to walk around Blue Jay Conservation Land. I, I tried to walk there sometime in the spring, and I could not find the trail for the life of me. And then Eagle Scout Project, which I think we talked about over the summer, took care and cleared it out. And I walked around this weekend. It was a beautiful day and it looked great. So I appreciate that project. But that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you. David?
Yeah, just quickly, Armin touched upon the fire from whatever morning it was, Saturday or Sunday morning. And I wanted to comment on the, the fact that, you know, I heard about it right when it was starting. And so I turned on the scanner that's available and listened to our fire department in action. And I told Greg this when, when I spoke with him, I don't know if I spoke with him or sent him a text, but the residents of the community, if they've never listened to the scanner during an emergency of that nature, to hear the professionalism, the level of calm and the level of just you know, the feeling that we are in good hands with our fire department during a crisis like that is tremendous. I mean, there were a number of communities that were involved, listening. Justine, you were in dispatch, so you understand how, you know, you have Concord involved. And, you know, on the scanner, you have Concord, Sudbury, Maynard, Acton, Bloxborough. And they're all commenting on this fire that, in reality, I'm sitting at home, I have no idea how big, bad, whatever it is, but to hear them work together, to hear them coordinate, set up, talk about where they are in the buildings, talk about the way that they're acting. And then to hear it all within an hour's time come to fruition that it's under control was something to, you know, just remarkable. And to hear it and to understand the level of, you know, training that they've gone through and the professionalism that they have was really impressive. And I wanted Greg to know that, and I hope that the chief has heard it, and now that the public has heard it, that, you know, they really showed their, their colors that day. And it's not only at that fire, but, you know, if you turn on your scanner and you hear just a response to a normal medical emergency, it's the same thing. And it's not just the fire department, the police were involved in that too, with shutting down roads and making sure that trucks were getting through and everything else. And so congratulations to our public safety officials. And I think we should all feel safe that we have a group of men and women that are, that are doing a good job for all of us. And that's really all I had to say.
Here, here.
Thank you, David. All right. Anyone else have anything else? All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. All in favor, Chris?
Yes.
Megan? No, not Megan. David?
Yes.
I was going around, going around the circle on my screen. Sorry about that, Megan.
The screen moved.
All right. Have a good, have a good night, everyone.
Great night, everybody.
Thank you.